And then.
Here.
Heya, Fred, Jim.
Here.
Amy.
Here.
Shannon.
Present.
Jessie. And. Oh, and Nisha. And I'd like to. Go do the approval of the minutes of the. The whole main meeting. And. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? So. Okay. Is moved, is there a second? Seconded. There any discussion? Right? Call for the vote. Uh, Tori.
For.
Jonathan.
Yes.
Heya.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Stacy.
Yes.
Motion passed. So. We're now at the point for general public comments. And this is general public comment, not specific to what we are going to be talking about tonight. So if there are any general comments, please come up to the stand here and say whatever you would like. Second call for general public comments. Yes.
You know, my name's Grant. I'm the city manager, and I think I've had the opportunity to meet all of you, but I just want to thank you for your service on the planning board. We really appreciate it here in City of Livingston.
Thank you. Okay, moving on then. Think I'd like to start with the, I'd like to welcome Mountain View subdivision people. And. Yeah, the stand is kind of in the way, but if I sit up there, then I can't see the screen, so it's kind of like a dilemma. Why don't you go ahead and go first, and then we'll have the staff report. And keep it to. Do you have a phone drive or something for that or?
No. No visual presentation. Good evening, members of the planning board. I'm Chris Naumann. I'm the Bozeman Branch Manager and Senior Planner at Sanderson Stewart. And I'm joined this evening by Joey Stazak, our professional traffic engineer, also at Sanderson Stewart. Summer Annaker, our project engineer with Sanderson Stewart. Andrew Field, the managing partner at Livingston West and the applicant. Richard Smith, owner's representative for Livingston West, and he is joining us virtually. And then Bill Fanning, who is legal counsel for Livingston West LLC. Again, I'm here today on behalf of the applicant Livingston West to highlight the key components of our preliminary plat application for the Mountain View subdivision located at the northeast corner of I-90 and Highway 10, the west entrance to Livingston. You may recall our presentation and application about a year ago, but I want to emphasize that this proposal and application is significantly revised based on prior feedback from many voices in our communities. First and foremost, there are fewer lots in this application because the PFL property has been removed. And as before, there will be some positive financial implications for the residents of Livingston. And the revised subdivision aligns with many of the goals and objectives of the growth policy. But as a little bit of context, the city annexed this property over 18 years ago. And the city has also zoned this area as highway commercial. And we believe these are with a clear intent of developing this property as part of the city's overall growth policy and plans. The subject of this public hearing is a preliminary plat application. So in the purest sense, the sole purpose is to place lines on a map that formally subdivide the applicant's property. And then the proposed lots will then create a place for development where, in essence, it has already been planned and encouraged via the past annexation and zoning. The applicant's intent is to improve the west end gateway interest into Livingston and comply with the uses that have already been adopted by the city of Livingston. Again, this subdivision is smaller than the previous version. This submittal includes a total of forty-three point nine acres, whereas the previous application included sixty-four point two acres. So again, approximately thirty-three percent smaller. Correspondingly, as you might imagine, there are fewer lots. This application has twenty-four lots proposed, the previous thirty-nine. So again, this version essentially includes less developable acreage. But at the same time, the application actually includes more open space parkland totaling twenty point four acres. All of the infrastructure, this is a phased preliminary plat, so we're proposing multiple final plat phases. And all the infrastructure for phase one of the subdivision is already in place, was recently constructed and paid for by the applicant and adjacent development. Any future development of these lots will increase the property taxes on this land, so there'll be more money going into the City of Livingston's general fund. And impact fees will be assessed to these lots as they are developed, so there'll be new funding going to the city for upgrades to public infrastructure. The potential use of special improvement districts would exclusively charge property owners served by any related improvements rather than burdening the general taxpayer. So the proposed subdivision will increase the tax base and generate additional funds to cover costs for infrastructure improvements and extended services. Although not required by subdivision statutes, the application specifies how the proposed preliminary plat supports the growth policy. On pages nineteen and twenty of the application, there's a comprehensive list of how the subdivision of the property aligns with the growth policy. But specifically, those are goal three point one, to prioritize infill over expansion by taking advantage of existing and planned infrastructure. Goal four point three, to protect and manage natural resources, open spaces, and wildlife. Goal five point one, to provide housing options to meet the needs of all residents. Goal six point one, to strengthen and diversify Livingston's economy. Goal eight point one, to create a complete and well-maintained transportation network within the city. And lastly, goal nine point one, to develop infrastructure to enhance community services and improve public safety for residents. One thing I wanted to just briefly mention is any subdivision and subsequent development does have impacts on traffic. But the raw data that we presented in our traffic analysis can be misleading and quite honestly, maybe scary to some. So we just wanted to address what this actually means for the drivers in the community. To be clear, the new vehicle trips generated by the subdivision at full buildout is four thousand and thirty-five trips rather than the gross number of trips of nine thousand nine hundred ninety-one mentioned in the staff report. Real-world impact, as outlined in the analysis, is cars in line at the West Park Street, Highway 10 intersection during a red light. The morning rush hour will increase by two vehicles. An additional six cars will queue up at that light during the evening peak rush hour. We want to thank you for your consideration and your appreciation of how this application differs from the proposed Mountain View subdivision. It aims to create an improved and aesthetic entrance to the greater community of Livingston on the west end of town. And again, to reiterate, preliminary plat proposes twenty-four lots for development and includes two lots of open space totaling over twenty acres. The subdivision creates an opportunity for the city to collect additional taxes and new impact fees. The proposed lots allow for future development in a way that aligns with the city's growth policy and upholds the character of Livingston by enhancing the western gateway. The applicant and the project team have reviewed the seventeen conditions of approval in the staff report and find those acceptable. We're here to answer questions that may help you in your discussion and your decision. So please feel free, staff or board members, to direct any specific questions to any member of our project team as you go through tonight's proceedings. And with our remaining couple of minutes, Bill Fanning would like to provide some important legal perspective. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Bill Fanning, Fanning Law, representing the applicant Mountain View subdivision. And you know, the goal with this presentation is really to have the engineers present the elements and really get dive into the details, allow you guys to kind of get into the substance of it. But just before the meeting tonight, we did, there was a public comment posted by the Friends of Park County that that my client Andrew asked me to address specifically because, you know, this is, this is the same, it's kind of a rehashed document of what we saw in the original application. And I just, I have to mention that this contains some real inaccurate and misleading comments, especially as relates to the statutes. And so that's. That's why I'd like to just mention this, you know, that this is the second iteration of this project, and it's the second time they've provided comment. And so it's just, they've made the same comments and they're still inaccurate. And so what I want to focus on is at least on page three of this Friends of Park County document, it cites to statute seventy-six one six oh five, describes the use of an adopted growth policy. And it starts with subject to subsection two, and then it goes on and after adoption of the growth policy, the governing board within the area must be guided, and they've highlighted must there. But what they don't do is include subsection two. And that's really important here because subsection two says, two A says, a growth policy is not a regulatory document and does not confer any authority to regulate that is not specifically authorized by law. And then two B says, a governing body may not withhold, deny, or impose conditions on any land use approval or other authority to act based solely on compliance with the growth policy. So I just want you to be aware that there, this is, this is not a legal argument that I could put in front of a judge because it's, it'll omit certain important sections of the statute. And on that same page, under the city's subdivision requirements, it would lead you to believe that may consider an officially adopted growth policy as the only criteria, but that's one of seven criteria. And there are six more criteria in Livingston statute, including the applicant's application. So, so there's a lot more to the story, and I just, you know, I think what we should all be focused on is whether this project meets the six criteria of seventy-six three six oh eight, which met it the first time. We had some disagreements. The applicant went back and made it better, and we're here to present how it meets the six elements for the second go around. So thank you for your time. We're here to answer any questions. Thanks.
So what we're going to do next is we're going to have a staff report given, and then we will ask any clarifying questions from you. And I just want to also reiterate to our board that we are not discussing the previous application, that we are only discussing this one that is before us today. And we will not be discussing any public comment that was given previously. So we are just reviewing what is before us today and public comment that we have been given in regards to this one today. And that there has been a there was the lawsuit filed, and at the moment, the judge has had a stay, so we are fully, you know, allowed to look at this, this application as it is right now. Okay, you have any questions on that? Okay. Okay, Jennifer, you're on.
Thank you, sure Jennifer. I am just sent a shout out to make sure people at home can see the slides. And yes, excellent. Thank you. So I've got a very brief, I'm just going to use some slides, and I'm going to be pulling from the staff report that you were sent as far as going through the specifics of the criteria evaluation. So this is for the Mount West major subdivision. It is Livingston West LLC, I'm sorry, Mountain View subdivision, Livingston West LLC. This is a set plan of the subdivision, showing the different lots, and as it's kind of a, it's total of twenty-four lots, twenty-two developable lots, two will be arc land or open space lots, and then there's the right-of-way dedication. This is being done in three phases or being proposed in three phases. So back out, as far as the location, the zoning and the land use on this property. You'll see the location, I think everyone probably knows where it is, but it is out by the I-90, Highway 10 interchange on the west side of town, right here, near printing for less, that's already there, and FedEx. As far as the zoning, you can see this area right here circled also. It is highway commercial, which is in blue. And for the future land use map, this is a community commercial. So this dark red right here. And what those mean, just as a reminder for folks. Highway commercial intended to provide areas for residential structures, commercial and service enterprises, which serve the needs of the tourist, traveler, recreationalist, or the general traveling public. Areas designated as highway commercial should be located in the vicinity of freeway interchanges. Then it goes on to discuss other places. I think we can agree, and this is a freeway interchange. Future land use, community commercial accommodates medium to large-scale wholesale, retail, lodging, offices, and service establishments typically located along major corridors that can function independent of adjoining developments and/or require individual access to public rights of way. So. Review criteria. Sure, maybe let's wait again, because I can't see everything at once. So Montana Code annotated, which is the state's subdivision statutes. Seventy-six three six oh eight is, discusses a local review of subdivisions, requires the decision by a governing body to approve, conditionally approve, or deny a proposed subdivision to be based on a specific documentable and clearly defined impact on the following primary criteria. There are six criteria that we look at, and they were evaluated in here in your staff rec. So again, just a reminder, I'll go through these, but the, the planning board's purview is to provide to the city commission findings of fact that support your recommendation. So this is a recommendation to the city commission. Your options are to approve it as it's proposed, approve it with conditions placed on it, or deny. So, you know. Some might quickly go through findings of facts. So effect on agriculture. Agriculture defined as production of food, feed, and fiber commodities, livestock and poultry, bees, fruit and vegetables, and sod, ornamental nursery, and horticultural crops that are raised, grown, or produced for commercial purposes. So in addition to what's in MCA, the city of Livingston in our subdivision regulations has some, some subquestions to sort of help in the analysis of these criteria. So would this subdivision remove agricultural or timberlands with significant existing or potential production capacity? No, staff has not identified existing agricultural or timberland resources on this site. Would it remove from production agricultural lands that are critical to the area's ag operations? No. Staff, again, has not identified any current or previous ag production on the subject property or anything significant nearby. Would the subdivision create significant conflict with nearby ag operations? Problems for moving livestock, operating farm machinery, maintaining water supplies, controlling weeds, et cetera. Staff has not identified or been notified of any intensive ag activities in the immediate area. It's not to say people don't grow some tomatoes or have small-scale ag. This is significant agricultural, commercial activity. Criteria B, effect on agricultural water user facilities. Because there is no significant agricultural use in the area. Staff has not identified agricultural water user facilities on the property on nearby, so no conflict is anticipated. Effect on local services. That's supposed to say local services, not just local. Sorry about that. And local services defined as all services provided by any local government unit, that would be the city of Livingston in this case, having jurisdiction over the subdivision, as well as those commonly provided by private entities to similar properties in the vicinity. So one of the things to look at, what additional or expanded public services and facilities would be demanded to serve the subdivision? And we have listed these out based on what has been included in the application as well as responses by referral agencies. Now, I will call to your attention that we received, or that I was forwarded three additional non-city referral agency responses today, and I just realized those were not printed. These were just public comments that were printed. Did everybody get those referral? It was US Postal Service, it was Wind Rider, and Fish and Wildlife.
Fish and Wildlife.
Yes, so has everybody seen that? Great. Um, so based on all of that, and I don't believe this would change, following additional expanded public services would be necessary to serve the subdivision. Water, sanitary sewer, garbage collection, streets and sidewalks, streetlights, stormwater facilities, police, fire, and emergency medical services. I'm going to say that because US Postal Service already serves the area. This is just one more thing on their route. This is not any extension of their service, really. What additional costs would result for services such as streets, law enforcement, parks and rec, fire protection, water, sewer, and solid waste, schools, and busing? The cost of fire and police services will increase proportionally to population growth in the city. However, the amount attributed to this particular development is, or to development in city is integrated into our current impact fee schedule. The current impact fee schedule was updated in 2021. New and expanded public infrastructure associated with the proposed subdivision will be constructed and paid for by private parties. Ownership and maintenance of public infrastructure dedicated to the city will be the responsibility of the city. And as stated in the Public Works referral, the developer covenants must be updated to indicate that the developer is responsible for sidewalk construction costs. Until the proposed subdivision lots are developed, however, is unknown whether the subdivision will have residential development. Similarly, it is unknown whether future housing would include residents with school-aged children requiring busing for school. So it's not something we can include in our consideration. We don't know what the use will be. Who would bear these costs of local service and expanded infrastructure? Taxes on new construction will be paid into the city's general fund, and impact fees will be charged at the time building permits are issued for the new development on the subdivided lots. The applicant is required to improve PFLA from the fire hydrant at the end of the existing pavement past envelope drive, and the applicant must bear the cost of constructing these improvements. Once that construction is completed, the city will assume responsibility for maintenance of water and sewer infrastructure, infrastructure, streets, streetlights, and sidewalks. Also, as noted in the Public Works referral, the city will absorb additional costs associated with Starload Booster Station for pumping water and providing fire flows to the new development in the proposed subdivision. The applicant has proposed to dedicate stormwater facilities and open space associated with the subdivision. However, the Public Works Director has requested and staff recommends that the Property Owners Association for the subdivision maintain ownership and maintenance responsibilities for the stormwater facilities. Public Works Director and staff also recommend that the applicant be required to deed restrict these subdivisions' open space and parklands for public use, but have the Property Owners Association assume ownership and maintenance responsibilities instead of the city assuming those as the applicant has proposed. Garbage service will be paid by user fees that are incurred by the individual lot owners in the subdivision when they are contracting for service. So as those lots are developed with the different businesses, residential, whatever it is. Another thing to consider, can the service providers meet the additional costs given legal and other constraints? Yes, our impact fees, the city's impact fees are designed to offset the increase in capital expenditures for public services. I said, I'm sorry, I said the applicants. Can the city and other service providers meet those costs? Our impact fees are applied to new development to offset those costs. They will be paid as each subdivided lot is developed. Increased tax revenue generated by new development and lots will also be directed into the city's general fund. So another thing, because effect on the public services is pretty extensive consideration. Would subdivision allow existing services through expanded use to operate more efficiently? The adjacent FedEx facility recently extended water and sewer mains to the edge of Highway 10 that could accommodate future service to additional annexed property across the highway, as well as the proposed subdivision lots as they are developed. For the Public Works referral letter, the sewer main near Kenyon Noble is a high-risk area with plate tile and capacity issues for future flows. A fifteen-inch main replacement is recommended in the wastewater collection PER, that's preliminary engineering report that was provided by the applicants. Present tax revenues received from the unsubdivided land, the 2022 tax bills totaled seventeen thousand six hundred fourteen dollars. What would be the approximate revenues received by the county, city, and school district when the subdivision is improved and built upon? It's impossible to, or very difficult at least, to estimate future tax revenue since the development types are not known on these lots, and we don't know the scale of that development on each lot. However, the applicant has estimated that annual tax revenues to the city of Livingston could be as much as $200,000 at full buildup of the subdivision. I've included how that estimate was provided and calculated by the applicant, if you would like to read through it. Based on that estimate, though, of the city's potential tax revenue at 200,000, the additional potential tax revenues for the county and school district, if you were using that 200,000 number, would be upwards of 300,000, again, all dependent on the type and scale of development on these lots. When new taxes generated, it cover additional public costs because it is zoned highway commercial with the potential for both hired and residential development as well as commercial uses. We anticipate it is likely that the property tax revenue generated by the new development will cover additional public costs. Impact fees will apply to the development as the lots are subdivided, and they also need to pay into the city's street and light maintenance districts, which will cover those expenses. Would any special improvement districts be created as part of this proposal? And no, we do not anticipate the creation of a special improvement district for the area within the subdivision. However, staff is recommending a waiver of protest requirement for a special improvement district for the subdivided lots. This waiver applies to a future project to create a bike and ped connectivity or facilities from this subdivision to the city's existing trail system to the east. This would only apply outside of the subdivision. It would not apply to anything within the subdivision as far as trails or any kind of open space improvements. That's the staff recommendation. So effect on natural environments, physical conditions that exist. How would the subdivision affect surface and groundwater, soil, slopes, vegetation, historical or archaeological features, and visual features within the subdivision or on adjacent lands? Would stream banks be altered, streams rechanneled, or surface water contaminated? No, streams exist. No, streams exist within the area proposed for subdivision. Um, erosion control needs to be installed in accordance with the Montana Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. Um, and that will help prevent sediment migration during runoff. Would groundwater supplies likely be contaminated or depleted as a result of the subdivision or construction within the subdivision? Uh, future development in the lots will um be supplied by city water mains. It's not anticipated to affect groundwater quantity. Um, a geotechnical report was prepared by TerraCon in May two thousand twenty one. This was included in the application materials. However, it was on the adjacent FedEx property. Uh, not on this property. That said, it confirmed that groundwater depth on the FedEx property was between six and fifteen feet below predevelopment site grades. Um, it is likely similar, or staff believes it is likely similar, that the similar conditions for groundwater. Would exist on this site that's proposed for subdivision as it is on the adjacent FedEx facility. Site. Um, the report recommends that individual contractors, as they develop the lots, should be made aware of the possibility of encountering groundwater during construction. Would construction of streets or building sites result in excessive cuts and fills on steep slopes or cause erosion on unstable soils? No, again, that stormwater management plan would that is proposed and is required for construction. Designed to comply with the city's public work standards and Montana DEQ standards. Erosion control also needs to be installed um as required by that SWP P plan. So all of those things are put in place to ensure that um. There are not that excessive cut spills potential for erosion. Would significant vegetation be removed? Um, causing soil erosion or instink and stability? No, um, again, same reasons, the stormwater pollution prevention plan, the city's public works design standards. All have specific requirements for grading and development and soil. Um. Sorry, erosion control and preventing sediment migration. Uh, and all of that is looked at when the individual lots, so I I'm sorry, I take it back. It's looked at as the individual lots are developed, when anybody comes in for a building permit as the lots are sold and developed. But also looked at when the infrastructure improvements are done. Would the subdivision be subject to natural hazards? Which is flooding, rocks, snow or landslides, high winds, pretty sure all of Livingston is is subject to high winds. Uh, severe wildfires or difficulties such as shallow bedrock, high water table, unstable or expensive soils or excessive slopes. None of the listed hazards have been identified within the area proposed for subdivision by staff. As part of this review or by any of the referral agencies. Staff does not anticipate that the proposed subdivision will be subject to these hazards. Building permits are required for structures built during the development, ensuring all buildings conform to the international building code. And uh for historical archaeological features, are there concerns? Um, those would be damaged or destroyed by the subdivision. Uh, there was a letter from the state historic preservation office uh that was provided with this application. Uh, it confirmed there have been a few previously uh conducted cultural resource inventories in the general area, but no. Reported cultural resource sites in um the area or in the area to be subdivided. Um, we don't anticipate any impacts on uh historical archaeological features by subdivision. Wildlife and wildlife habitat. How would the subdivision affect critical wildlife areas such as big game wintering range, migration routes, nesting areas, wetlands or other important habitat? Uh, I. Because the Fish and Wildlife Service um. Letter Kate was sent to me today. Um, it wasn't really incorporated in here, but I will say I I don't believe that what I'm gonna go over that was included in the staff report. Um, would have changed as a result of that information that was provided. Um, the proposed subdivision contains wetland areas as shown on the preliminary plat. Uh, they'll be protected during and after construction of the subdivision. Um, the delineation study was conducted in September two thousand nineteen. Um, for the eastern half of the proposed subdivision. So it looks at the the area that's shown as open space wetland. Um. Effects on the quality and quantity of wetlands and surface water will be mitigated by designing around these areas to the greatest extent. Again, um, local, state, federal regulations, those um. The stormwater uh pollution prevention plan. Um, the subdivision has not previously formally been previously formally identified as big game wintering range or migration routes. Um, as far as staff is aware, with the review of this application. The applicant has solicited comments from Fish Wildlife Parks. Again, those were received and forwarded me today. Um. The wetland delineation study, however, did confirm, so that was just focusing on that eastern area. That's the open space. And that study confirmed there are no critical habitats for federally listed threatened and endangered species in that area on the subject property. The application states the subdivision will comply with Park County weed control district requirements. Following preliminary plat approval, a weed management plan application and three year monitoring contract will be submitted to the district. A weed management plan will be developed with the Park County Weed Control Board to prevent invasive weeds from affecting the native vegetation. Um, pets or human activity, how would that affect wildlife? Um. So the potential for human wildlife interaction may exist if future development includes residential uses. Um. Seven to space potential conflicts would be minimal. Um, the applicant's um. Has included a suggestion for pets to be leashed while in these areas. Um, in the open space areas. Um, but there is no, it's a suggestion. Uh, I do not believe, and I'm sorry if I'm mistaken on this, I do not believe it is a requirement in the covenants at this time. But that was a suggestion in the Fish and Wildlife Service letter. Was to require a leashing. Effect on public health and safety, um. The condition of well being, where in risk of injury to the community at large is minimized. Uh, would the subdivision be subject to hazardous conditions due to high voltage lines, airports, highways, railroads, high pressure gas lines or adjacent industrial uses? No new access points to Highway ten are proposed as part of this subdivision. They recently, uh, there was a new access point um introduced. From this general area to Highway ten, so there are now two, I think, total. Leading from this, the subdivision area of the circle to Highway ten. And there are none beyond that that are proposed as part of this application. Um. Nearby active rail lines are located more than three hundred feet away and across the highway from the subdivision. Um, so any, any hazard is is negligible um from that. Existing uses may be subject to complaints from residents of the subdivision. There are no existing uses on the subject property because it is currently vacant. What public health or safety hazards? Dangerous traffic, fire conditions would be created by the subdivision. Um, an all weather access road between Antelope Drive and PFL Way must be constructed as part of phase one improvements. To provide maintenance and emergency access. Um, until future phases and streets are constructed to complete the internal road network. Uh, Public Works Director has requested the applicant provide dead end barricades at the cul de sacs for each phase of development. To prevent the public from accessing the all weather road, so they will be blocked off, but they will be available in the event of an emergency. And they're not gonna be paid, but they will be usable for that emergency access. And that should minimize any sort of concerns about um health and safety as far as access from emergency vehicles and responders. Um, as the applicant said, a traffic study was prepared by Sanderson Stewart in May two thousand twenty three. Um, to determine the impacts of the subdivision on the surrounding transportation network. That was in um appendix D in your application. Because the exact nature of the future development on the lots is not known, the study looked at different types of uses that may be expected. On the developed lots um to determine trip generation estimates. Um, it anticipates that at full build out, the subdivision is projected to generate a total of almost ten thousand gross average weekday trips. With eight hundred and sixty six trips generated during the AM peak hour and seven hundred fifty four trips during the PM peak hour. Based on that analysis, it's anticipated the volume of trips added to the network by the proposed subdivision are projected to trigger. The warrants for turn lanes into the site access intersections from Highway ten, so those two access points. But the final decision to install any turn lanes uh shall be made by Montana Department of Transportation. After evaluation impacts to other aspects of the intersection or adjacent intersections. In other words, it's pretty hard to definitively say what. What those actual traffic projections are what they will be. Um, and so Montana Department of Transportation will look at that as they're developed. Um. I did not get anything as far as responses from Department of Transportation. Um, and I may ask Shannon to weigh in as far as um. If they look at that, since new new approach permit is needed as development uh intensifies. Anywhere I come from, they do look at that, and if you increase uh. Points of access anticipated more than twenty percent over what's there, then you need to make some changes. And when they talk about warrants, that's. The what triggers the need. You can't just say, oh, you should put a new turn lane. There has to be. Um. The analysis has to show that it's warranted to actually install a new turn lane or something like that. So staff's recommendation is to let. Montana Department of Transportation, since that is their roadway, that is their right of way to determine. Um, what improvements need to be made according to um the development occurs in the subdivided lots. So, um, again, I'm just gonna bring you back to MCA, uh, section seventy six, three, six, oh, eight, one. A governing body may not deny approval of a proposed subdivision. Based on subdivision's impacts on educational services. We don't know what those are gonna be, or based solely on parcels within the subdivision, having been designated as wildland urban interface parcels. Uh, the findings of facts that need to be issued that weigh these criteria, agricultural, agricultural water user facilities. Um, local services, natural environment, wildlife, wildlife habitat and public health and safety. Those are the criteria that form the basis for the findings of fact. Um, and the staff recommendation is that based on. My analysis and the input of referral agencies, both internal and external. Um, staff recommends that you recommend conditional approval of the subdivision to the city commission. Um. With several conditions of approval as listed both as part of the record in the application. But some of those have been adjusted based on the comments. Um. And I'm happy to go through those, there's seventeen if you would like. Not sure how you wanna do that.
I I think that it would be good to just um read through the conditions because that. Is important for everybody to hear what those conditions are.
Okay. Um, so. Uh, one, the subdivider will sign a waiver of protest of a special improvement district for all lots in the subdivision. The waiver applies to a future project to create a bicycle and pedestrian connectivity from this subdivision. Um, to the city's existing trail system to the east. Again, this would only be a special improvement district. For improvements outside the subdivision for those multimodal transportation improvements and connections. All infrastructure will comply with the city of Livingston Public Works Design Standards and specifications, which are too numerous to list. But I'm sure that Shannon would be happy to answer any questions. Um, streetlights will be required within the development type and spacing will be as per um city specifications. Also in public works design standards. All outdoor lighting must be night sky friendly and it needs to be improved by the city prior to installation. Uh, so that is. Yeah, the developer covenants must be updated to indicate that the developer is responsible for sidewalk construction costs, not the city. Or to make that clear. Stormwater design will meet all applicable DEQ standards. The property owners association must maintain ownership, or staff is recommending. The condition that they maintain ownership and maintenance responsibilities for the stormwater facilities once they are constructed. That takes it off the city's responsibility plate. The applicant is required to deed restrict the subdivision open space parklands for public use. And the property owners association must assume ownership and maintenance responsibilities. Again, taking that off the city's responsibilities plate. Erosion control needs to be installed in accordance with the state's stormwater pollution prevention plan requirements. Development needs to comply with the Park County Weed Control District requirements. The subdivider will be responsible for all required street signing to include traffic control signs as well as street name signs. All signs must be built and installed according to the city's specifications. Painting of curbs at fire hydrants will also be required. I'm assuming that's to call attention to where the hydrants are as well as to prevent people from parking there. Applicant is required to improve PFLA from the fire hydrant at the end of the existing pavement past Antelope Drive. And the applicant must bear the cost of constructing these improvements to the right of way. Applicant must install, must provide dead end barricades at the cul de sacs. For each phase of development as the subdivision is developed and as the road is extended. To prevent the public from accessing that all weather road that is being required to allow for emergency access. Before that right of ways is constructed. Um. And I think I should have put this before that. An all weather access road between Antelope Drive and PFOA needs to be constructed as part of phase one. Um, to provide maintenance and emergency access, and that is until the future phases and streets are constructed. As the phasing goes on, that access road will be in the same location. It will just be improved upon and built according to. City specifications for a final road surface. And layout. Um. Building permits are required for structures built during future development, so as the lots are developed. Any new structures require building permit, ensuring all buildings conform to the international building code. A Montana licensed engineer or his supervised representative will be required to be on site during utility construction. The utility reimbursement plan is requested by the developer. It must be submitted to and approved by the city prior to beginning construction. And any improvement agreements for deferred infrastructure construction need to be reviewed and approved by the city prior to the beginning of construction. And just as an FYI, near the bottom, this is a recommendation um based on um. The wastewater collection preliminary engineering reports. Um. It was not included as a must do condition. Um, I believe staff was sort of putting that. In your corner to discuss. Um, but the sewer main, your Kenyon Noble, being a high risk area because of the play tile and capacity issues. Um, the recommendation in the PR is for a fifteen inch main replacements.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, what we're gonna do now is see if you have any clarifying questions. Just clarify if you have a question about the report. Um, then we're gonna go to some general public comments and then we'll get clarifying comments from you. And then we'll do other questions. So do any of you have a clarifying question for Jennifer? On anything that she presented?
One of its.
Uh, Shannon, could you just explain, I'm, I I've read a couple times about this fifteen inch main that's collapsing at Kenyon Noble and. What is that all about? What's the, what's the deal with that?
So, um. I would be hesitant to use the word collapse. It's not collapsed, it's 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 functional. And uh with the current connections on that main, which include PFL and a FedEx facility. It does have adequate capacity. Um, the main is over sixty years of age, it's clay tile. Um. Uh, consistent with Jennifer and some of the traffic counts, um, you know, based on the development plans, um, if approved. Um, FedEx is a large facility on a large foot track that uses very little water. And and puts very little uh waste into our sewer collection system. Hotels, multifamily units, things of that nature that have, you know, higher water demand are gonna have increased sewer flows. And that is just something I want everybody to be aware of. And we will watch, you know, again, if 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 the subdivision is approved and we work with. Developers of each of these lots, we will keep an eye through that process of of. process of, of our water and sewer model to make sure that, that we're addressing and planning for the replacement of that main before it exceeds seventy-five percent of its capacity.
And that is a water delivery system or is it the sewage?
It is, it is a gravity. It's the gravity sewer. So again, when Andrew built PFL, he extended a ten inch sewer main and twelve inch water main out to the facility where he connected to the existing infrastructure of the city at that time is, is the area that I'm, I've brought up to address.
Just a follow on question to Jim's for Shannon. If there were needs to improve that, those water and sewer lines, who would be on the hook for that?
So that meets the definition of impact fees, which is based on the meter size of each property as they develop. So, for example, you know, a five eighths, three quarter inch water meter results in, you know, a little over twelve thousand five hundred dollars in sewer water impact fees.
And, and you expect those would, would cover the cost of, of the new, improved infrastructure?
Well, that's the intention of the impact fees. To, to, to cover their, their proportionate share of that capacity.
And I understand that that's the intention as they're, as they are currently, do you think, do you expect that they would cover the cost of, of the needed upgrades?
It really depends on how many fees we collect.
So the way that it develops, yeah, impact how much and so fees.
Larger, larger services result in significantly higher impact fees such than, than a smaller residential type development.
And at any time, then you could collect a smaller impact fee, but then need and there would be less demand on that pipe, but then you could have future development that requires more so that you would have higher impact fees to pay for the replacement of it. Is that what you're basically saying?
And that's how the, our current impact fee schedule is calculated. It, it, it has an escalating value based on the demand.
Any other questions, Jonathan?
Is it every time to ask like a lot more questions about that and things that are in the proposal or, or is it wait till later?
Is it like a clarifying question or is it just more?
Just wanting more information about like fifteen inch main and how much that costs and things like that.
Got any clarifying?
Okay, how much would it cost to run a fifteen inch main out there?
So it's, I can give you a range. Obviously, we just bid the downtown project very tight constraints. Very expensive. In an area where it's a little more open, not a lot of utility impact. Certainly, there's going to need to be traffic control because of the, the current businesses and that. Again, timing also, I mean, predicting something four or five years down the road. You know, five percent is kind of a typical contingency that we would add per year for that. I, I, I would say would be in that hundred and fifty to two hundred dollar range if it was a, if it was an open cut and replace. There are other technologies. We could actually look at pipe bursting, the existing pipe where you wouldn't have to do an open trench and it could be considerably less than that.
And how far is that? Would that have to go?
Basically from the Delmar area to Park Street. Near the Radio Shack area.
About a mile, right?
Could say less than that, but.
Kind of following up on that, but does there have to be any sort of like water loop or anything in that areas or accommodate this?
I certainly feel there needs to be for full build out of, of not only this development, but certainly or the Jesse property, which is across I would can.
And how much would that cost?
We have in our capital improvement plan about one point two five million for that.
And taxpayers would pay for that.
It, it just depends on the funding mechanism. I, we, we've, we've previously discussed, you know, creating an SID for that area and, and having each owner pay their proportionate share for that.
Thank you.
And a follow up question on that, then if it's a water loop and it's done at a later time in this subdivision is approved. Does that subdivision then become part of the SID? Or not?
There, there's some different options. It would seem reasonable that all the, all the connections to that line that the loop would be needed would be included in the SID. So it would be any, anyone connected from say our booster station all the way out to where the, the, the water main currently terminates near Highway ten and the, the approach for FedEx.
It's unrelated to the water main. So if people want to, there's other.
Jim, did you have any other question on the water?
It just had to do with the letter we received from Wind Rider or the comment from Wind Rider. So that's not currently cut. That area is not currently covered by the Wind Rider. And I'm just wondering in terms of effect on local services, it wasn't, busing wasn't mentioned in there. So wondering how that would be covered.
Not as a private local service, but you pay into it, but.
It's operated by the county. I think the commission just approved some funding, some funding for that program. I think it functions with grants, but actually I think Tori is actually on the board.
The, the letter from Wind Rider suggested asking the, the applicant to contribute the required fundings, the required funding wasn't, didn't seem particularly on, onerous, especially in comparison to what some of these infrastructure costs might be like. I think it was like five thousand dollars in here, which is about what the city, it's actually that is what the city pays into Wind Rider. And the county pays the same. But it's not, it's not within the current, the current service and there wouldn't be a lot of redundancy with providing services out there. So it'd really be like a it might be a somewhat expensive route to get out there to collect and, and, and it really the, the usefulness and the, the ridership of that is going to depend like really greatly on what gets built, which we kind of have absolutely no idea. But I, I think my, my interpretation is that funding that would not be particularly challenging, especially if there were some kind of commitment from the developer or from the Property Owners Association or something like that.
Jim, did you have a question?
I did that for Jennifer. In your staff report, when you talked about the effects on the natural environment and the, you determined that wildfire is not a concern on the property. But as we know, most wildfires that destroy places originate somewhere else. Maui, for example. Forest fires that causes homes to be destroyed are embers from a fire below an ironed to a property. So even though the property itself may not have wildfire risk, they can still be at risk of wildfire in that area, grassland area. So I just take issue with saying that there's no problem with that.
And it affirming. So, you know, again, we'll, we'll go back and talk. So we require the, not only the PFL development, but additionally the FedEx development. So if, if Jim, I would encourage you to drive out there. There, there are five, there are fire hydrants every four hundred feet. We have fire hydrants basically from Starlow Booster Station all the way out to PFL. So I can't speak for the fire department, but certainly there, there are fire hydrants with adequate fire flows. At this location.
I agree. But things happen quickly in a fire and if there are residences or whatever happens, we don't know. As Tori mentioned, we don't know what's going on. That's another problem I had. You don't know what's going in there. We don't know what kind of structures. We don't know what kind of covenants and what kind of structures. You don't know what kind of vegetation and landscape and whatever. An emergency situation, fire hydrants are great if you get through them quick enough. So I just want to make sure that we don't just assume that you're there because it is, it is in a wild land. Put it that way. Open grassland all around it. So.
I might offer that, again, I'm not a fire expert, but this is something which we dealt with in, in Boulder before I came here. There was a tiny wildfire that burned a thousand homes on January first in the middle of the winter that were the fire spread across open space, but there it got into towns where there were, was lots of development. The one thing I think that is a positive in preventing or maybe lessening impact of wildfires here would be the barrier that the interstate provides. If they're coming from the south. That is almost like a, a natural, if you will, well, not natural, but it, it would serve as a fire break to some extent. And like Shannon said, there are quite a few fire hydrants. I'm going to guess probably more than in other places in the city right now. So maybe I would just say the way that this is written again, and this is in our subdivision regs is do we see that the subdivision is subject to these hazards? That sub question is not actually in the state regs and I would, I would say maybe consider also, is it more, is it more subject to fire hazard than other places in your city? And that's, that's up to you to determine if you think because it is on the outskirts and there is more open space or, or grassland around it, but I just kind of wanted to bring that up.
Not to belabor this, but I have done extensive research on forest fires and how they act and how they move and they control embers two miles in front of the fire. So the freeway will act as it may act, it may not. I just want to make sure we don't take this lightly, that there are vulnerable places, especially when they're out in open country with the wind. Free the blow and free to blow whatever it wants to blow, wherever it wants to blow on. So I just took issue with that. Just want to make sure that that's not just passed over as.
Understood. Are there any other questions, Tori?
Thanks. I think it makes sense to go with me because it's related to fire, not wildfires. I, I might have missed it, but I looked for letters from the police and fire chiefs. Did, did, did those exist anywhere?
I summarized the.
I saw a comment of no concern, but it wasn't attributed to the police, the, the police or fire chiefs.
Livingston Fire Rescue. So that would be the fire chief, Josh Shabelowski. No concerns. The only comment he made was he is supportive of the new line extensions because there are so many of the highest shown the plans. What's that? Let's see. Nope. Livingston Building and Police Department simply responded that they had any concerns.
Okay, regarding a, a different issue, I heard from a police officer about issues of, of short staffing and so I was that doesn't quite track with no issue related to this, but I'm not intending to deliberate right now. Just wanted to ask if we had letters. So no letters, but just reference to conversations that you had.
No. So actually, the way that I, I do Jelaine use reviews is I send out the proposal to for, for these types of things, fire and rescue, which is the fire department, police, public works, building departments. Those are kind of the standard ones I've been selling to. And I asked them to send back in writing what their concerns are and if they have no concerns also to confirm them. So I do have emails and I'm sorry, I thought I included it in here, but maybe not. I think I may have just summarized. If it's not in the attachment, but the police department, the police chief actually did send a response as did Jim Bell for the building department, saying they had no concerns specifically. So that's what I'm basing down.
So I have a couple of clarifying questions and maybe this might be for the Mountain View team, but the staff report talks about the ten thousand average weekday trips versus what Mountain View reported is four thousand. And I'm wondering where that gross discrepancy came into play.
I can answer that too. So there, there are two kind of deductions from that, from that gross number. The first is internal capture, which I actually planned to ask them to define for all our benefit later. But it basically means like trips that happen within the development of itself, so they wouldn't affect the outside network. And then the other one was pass by trips, which means trips that were not generated because of the development, but a trip chain, meaning you're, you're going to three different places. And this is one of the places that you stop along the way that, that knew that development didn't necessarily generate that trip, but it became one of the stops along that trip. So there are, they, they include six thousand or so of those either internal or pass, pass by trips. I'm going to ask them about where that high of a figure comes from. But that's what, that's where those deductions come from. Did I do an okay job?
Did you have another question? We'll get that answered.
Yes, that, that might be a question. My other question might be for them as well, but I know we, I've just heard a lot of talk about we don't know the type of developments that are going to go on. And I can't, on my phone, I can't pull up the document, but I thought somewhere around the page one fifty-five. It mentioned a fifty room hotel, two gas stations, twenty fueling stations, coffee shop, fast food. So why is there this conversation of like, we don't know what's going to take place on those?
Okay, so who wants to answer that?
I'm happy to. So, so those are presented as, as what might be developed there. This application is looking at subdivision plan. So how a, a, a property is subdivided and the infrastructure that's put into service those lots as they are proposed in those configurations. So there's nothing. They do not have to provide us because they haven't sold the lot yet. They had, the subdivision hasn't gone through. They're not separate lots. So until they sell those, this is, this is what might be possible. This is what I think the applicant has indicated they'd like to see happen if I'm not mistaken. But this is not a guarantee. So that's why we say there's, there's a lot of unknowns about the traffic impacts and the tax, you know, the tax revenue and all that, because you just don't know. Somebody may decide to buy a half these lots and say, I just want to put in all residential. It's great. We need housing, but it changes the traffic impacts, you know, a, a whatever, a large hotel or something, or not a large hotel, but a hotel versus, you know, some multifamily housing is a difference, is a different type of, of traffic generator. Same thing with restaurants, people coming on and off the interstate, that's what goes there. So that's, that's why, because there's no guarantee of what development, who is going to buy the property and what they're going to put in there and the scale of it.
So I guess my question kind of then goes back to that fifteen inch main replacement. So I'm sorry, you pointed that way? So I guess that I, again, and I I guess I don't know where I'm getting at, but it's, it's kind of hard to have hypotheticals on.
I don't know. I believe you have to plan for the maximum of if you had the most possible, whatever the worth for most build out. And so you have to have enough water. And so you have to have enough water to do whatever that maximum potentially might.
Exactly.
And so you couldn't, you don't want to spend all the money to put in the six inch line when you know you're going to need a fifteen inch line. Have to go and do it again later. So you put in the fifteen inch line, correct me if I'm wrong, Shannon. Because you think that there's a potential for. Whatever.
Absolutely. Well said, Madam Chair, and. I just, you know. Statement of fact, that's what Andrew did when PSL was developed. If I do, I may have the floor. I I just want to, so I I appreciate the questions on. The water loop and the concern obviously for the capacity in the sewer. I I want to, I want to make it clear that, you know, there there's another forty four acres. Uh, on the other side of Highway ten that's going to be participating in the cost of of this sewer. And the water more than likely. It may be as a developer or maybe as the single property owner, but. With as long as that pro- that property is annexed into the city. It's our job as planners and engineers and directors. To make sure that the city can provide adequate water sewer, strong water for that forty four acre development. That that decision was made when it was annexed into the city many, many years ago. So they they are a partner. They will be a. Partner as because it's forty four acres in any in any um of the funding necessary to do the water loop. Or 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 the sewer of size.
Okay, anything else, Jonathan? We we need to move on.
I I have one. Thank you, Jennifer. And the the staff report was very well done. Um, there was one question that I had that I. If I may, Madam Chair, just ask Chris and the Sanderson Stewart team on. Just the traffic study and if MDT or systems impact have been contacted and. And if they have been, what what was those discussions as far as intersection? Uh, or highway ten improvements that may be necessary.
Uh, you go ahead. I I think we're to the point where we'll let you do some clarifying and then we'll probably comment. Hear the the clarifications and then we'll have further comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Joey Stazak, Traffic Engineer, Sanderson Stewart. Um, answering a couple of questions first. Uh, the traffic study has been submitted through MDT Systems Impact. We're waiting on initial comments. Um, we should have them, I think, by next week with the deadline, um, but we're working with the planner. Um, similarly, what we did with FedEx, we worked with the planner. They reviewed our um approach application, but also the whole of it. The whole development traffic impacts. One comment before, um, even though we're not looking for a new approach off of Highway ten. MDT will still review the um, the trips, the traffic that's coming with this new development. And they always have the power to revoke the approach permit or restrict it. So they're still looking continuously at. What's changing? It's not a one off, you know, approaches there. Um, they'll always look at what's new, what's changing to approaches. Um, and so that'll go through with every application through the systems impact. Um, similarly, the forty four acres across, unless they're planning not to access Highway ten, they'll go through the same process. That we are doing now and also that we did with FedEx. Well, I might do run through a couple of traffic. Quick, quick numbers. Um, yeah, again, hitting on things people touched on, um, you know, preliminary plat were not required to provide a traffic study at this point. It is a little bit of a guessing game, knowing what will be developed in these lots. So at the request of the city, we did take our best stab and and I'd say a little bit of a aggressive growth number, um, looking at. Um, hotels and gas stations, not just, you know, saying this will all be low residential or or offices low generating. This is, you know, a very realistic view of what um, the vision is for this site. Um, so we completed that traffic study. We've updated as noted this past May, um, including that we've we've got existing conditions. We've looked at five years of crash history. Um, we've worked with the Montana Department of Transportation. And then at the end of all of this, um, we do have recommendations for some of those turn lanes on Highway ten. The way the warrants are met, it's really like a a friction. Um, equation, how many cars are trying to turn in front of how many other cars based on the speed of the highway? There's a lot of. Factors that go into if um, the Montana Department of Transportation would like to move forward with the turn lane or not. We noted um, at the time of the FedEx application, the printed for less access warranted a left turn lane. With existing conditions and the state did not want to pursue that. Um, so they have other criteria, whether it's safety, whether it's a turn lane provides adequate capacity increase. They they evaluate a lot of those other things on their um, highway before they make an ultimate decisions. So this will just be another step where they'll reevaluate those approaches um, based on this development and provide what they will require. Um, the highway there.
So it's both, it's both a highway turnout and it's a left or right turn lane within the development. Or we're talking only the Highway ten turn lanes?
MDT would only formally have jurisdiction over the turn lanes off of the highway. Um, they could recommend based on our analysis and the report as well as the city, if we need to add, you know, a left turn lane and a right turn exiting. The subdivision, um, that was incorporated as well as the type of design vehicle. So for the new approach at the Weston Road. That design of that approach was accommodating specifically for the vehicles that are coming in and out of that facility without encroaching open lanes. Blocking any type of movement. So that's kind of the process that goes through um, with the state. And again, they're just starting. The review process, I think, on FedEx, we had three or four rounds of comments and providing more information on hydraulics and traffic. And geometric design. So we'd anticipate something similar within this go around. Um, they're obviously familiar with the site. And what's kind of developing in the area. I'll jump real quickly to trip generation if that's um, it good description on the trip. So. Um, ten thousand, you know, this this revision of the site where a little bit below ten thousand. Um, that's a daily number of trip trip ends, you know, in origin and destination, one directional trip. So if you made a trip to the store and back, that's techni- or a trip to the store and back, that's two trips in our model. Um, so they're one way trips. Um, we always start with roast trips, so it it comes from the manual you can see on the table there. It's the. It's a national approved um, IT trip generation manual. That's what the MDT traffic impact study requirements recommend. As well as almost every jurisdiction we work in. The current edition is the eleventh model, so every year they get more data, more. Input to make that just more refined to the current conditions. It is a national book, so. You know, what happens in Livingston, Montana might not be the same as New York, New York, but there are criteria in that manual that you can specify. Urban areas, suburban, rural, um, you can look at different um, intensities based on, you know, a hotel, you can look at square footage. You could look at number of rooms. You kind of break down those numbers to get it a little bit more fro- refined to the particular. Um, area of development. So we start with the gross trips and then what we're showing in our traffic study are two somewhat reductions. The first is internal capture. So again, what was well spoken, um, internal capture trips are trips that go from. Let's say one track of land to another in the same subdivision, but do not exit to the external roadway. So it could be walking trips, biking. It could be driving trips where somebody from, say, a gas station goes to the hotel and back. Um, those are counted internally and evaluated how the site plan is developed, but those aren't equipped to the external roadways that we evaluated. So those would be trips that are not getting to Highway ten. The way we calculate those numbers, um, in addition to the trip generation manual, um, IT provides another trip generation handbook, very refined naming. Um, that provides again, national numbers of based on a commercial node and a residential node. Um, and based on the size of those, the the specifics of them, they might say, and I don't have it offhand, you know, we do have a worksheet for it, but. Maybe fifty percent of trips going from a residential to a commercial are internally captured. And then the reverse trip is maybe forty three percent. So it's a bunch of numbers that you, based on the current development plan. Um, you run those through and that's what we're providing in the table is for internal capture. So that's kind of the first number we take away. It's not a trip that doesn't exist. It's still somebody who goes to the hotel, somebody who goes to the gas station, but it's all encompassed in the. In the subdivision does not move out to the external roadway or intersections. Um, the next one we have on the list is a pass by trip. So um, again, well spoken to kind of the description. It's, you know, it's a a good example with the gas station and somebody who's headed to work and they. Um, instead of going from Highway ten all the way into town, they they take a right into the gas station, fill up, and then they take a right back on Highway ten. So it's a trip that was existing on the network today, so it's not new people coming into the model. It's just rerouting them in our model. So um, it could be somebody who was on the interstate and was heading west and they decided to get off. Make a stop, get back in the interstate, that's brought into our model, but it's not considered a new trip to the network.
So where are you with the um, the dis- difference between the four thousand and the nine thousand? Which category did that end up in?
So that's, that's the third row. That's the pass by trips. And so um, it's still a trip. It's still brought into our model. It's it's brought into where delay is. It's it's brought into the turn lane warrants. Um, you know, if there were signal warrants, all of that, it's still brought into that. It's just not a new network that we provide on the on the external roadways. There's actually a third um, one you could look at it, multimodal reduction. If you felt like there is justification to say. Ten percent of um, trips coming from this area to an external node would be walking, biking, non-vehicle. You could reduce that. Um, again, for kind of grounds of of conservatism, we we did not reduce any trips for biking and walking. Specifically for this area too. You know, printing for less is an external node, so you could have somebody who walks between these, but um, it's going to be a small number at this stage. Until some future development and connections are made. So that's not on the list, but again, you take kind of the gross trips, that's close to the ten thousand. And start reducing them out. So what we come up with is four thousand new trips on the on the roadway today. Um, that also includes for the pass by thirty, four hundred trips that are kind of rerouted through the network, again, already there, but rerouted. Um, it's all brought into our model and that's how we kind of come up with this future year. Traffic projections. Um, additionally, we also add some background growth. Um, we're seeing about a two percent growth on Highway ten excluding. FedEx and any other development adjacent. So we've added two year growth to our models and then the remaining build out of FedEx site. So that's all brought into our traffic study. Um, that's how we look at kind of the future year and then reevaluate. Intersection level service delay, queuing, um, and as we reported, there's very minor changes from existing conditions. Ten thousand seems, sounds like a lot and it is. You break that down into what's new to the network. And not even for a day, what's what's specific on the AM commuting peak hour, the PM. Um, more often than not, that peak hour is more of a peak fifteen, peak thirty minutes and you might see, you know, a vehicle or two difference.
Was there a question?
I just want to make sure I understand it so that when all these numbers you came up with are for. Potential. Hotels, gas stations, wondering.
Yes.
Jonathan, did you have a question?
I don't have a question.
Tori?
I have just a few. Uh, thanks so much. Super um. Super uh, comprehensive assessor. So this is getting at Amy's question. I I appreciate the. How you you say that you come up with a conservative es- estimate of of trip generation and. You know, it's in this, it's in this trip generation table summary summary table that. We kind of are seeing what uh, what the potential mix of uses might be. Um, it's really the only place in the whole whole thing where we have um, the potential mix of uses. Um, so I have a couple of questions about that. The first of first of those is what is, what what process did you use to come up with? That mix of uses. Uh, you did say that it's a realistic view of the vision for the site. Um, you know, I'm sure. There's a lot of people here. There's been a lot of money spent on on this proposal so far. I'm sure you've done a market analysis or someone has along the way. Would you describe kind of how you came to uh, this mix of uses for for the development?
Yeah, and I'll probably pass most of the beef of that question to the rest of the team, but in terms of the traffic side of this, um. It is, I mean, it is kind of the first glimpse of what you could be here, um, or realistically what might be here. Um, and part of it's the, you know, the city requested because something like the sewer main, you know, you don't even know if that's the start of an issue until you have something to look at. So we're, we're starting that process. Um, the Montana Department of Transportation takes a long time through their systems. And so we're starting that process now too. Um, when it does come to subdivision, if there are changes, if if densities increase, I mean, that's another step to review. It would mean revising our analysis and um, that's why that's often weighted to the end till you have a definitive plan. Again, it is providing information to what this could be and start those conversations.
Thank you.
So.
We're we're just going to continue to have. Did you want to have your other team answer the rest?
Development plan or vision?
I mean, the only thing to add is, again, um, Jim would would all have made this request to provide a traffic analysis in the original application. We typically don't do this level of detailed work until it's like a master site plan. Where development is literally planned out or most commonly at a site plan level. Where Joey's team can plug in the use that's literally designed, construction documents. We've got a hundred pages of design for a fifty room motel. Cool, fifty room hotel, plug in numbers. So this is very speculative, as you pointed out in your Wind Rider comment. We have no idea. What the development's going to be, but to meet the request of. Mr. Woodall, we had to make us a probable scenario. Just want to make sure everyone understands when Joey says it's conservative, we mean conservatively high. Um, so. It very well may be, um, call it a maximum development scenario. Those lots, I could buy one of those lots and put my wood shop on it to make cabinets and. I'm self-employed and I'm one person, same lot could be redeveloped as a fourplex. And that, you know, so on and so forth. So it's conservatively high and. It would have required a lot more money, but it maybe would have been fair to show, or your scenario B or scenario C, which only would have been. Less intense use, less trips, less sewer demand, so on and so forth. So just again, supplying exercise. This is the reason, exact reason it's not required by statute is because we are being very speculative.
Thank you. Tori, did you have another question?
Yeah, um. For the the benefit of my fellow planning board members. You you've done a fantastic job of defining some of these transportation terms. Uh, would you? Would you tell us what level of service is?
So so um, we actually try to define this in every study we we have, because it is a. Uh, term thrown around that is sometimes hard to grasp, but it it's really kind of a driver experience and. It's solely based on delay or seconds per vehicle that a driver experiences going likely through an intersection. You can do it for. Corridors as well and um, it's a national number for uncontrolled, stop, control or roundabouts or uncontrolled intersection. They have thresholds, what's an A, what's a B, what's a C? And and the same thing for a signalized intersection. Um, it really is again, a defining of the driver experience. Level service C is the state threshold for a minimum. If if you go to a more urban areas, um, they'd be happy with level first E in some instances, you know. So C is what we aim for in the state. Some municipalities have looked for allowing to get to D in certain times of of the day. Again, it's usually a spike in the peak here and there. It's not a consistent throughout. Um, but again, that's kind of how we we come up with that A through F.
Thank you. And um, you you actually answered my next question, which was going to be what, what is the state typically determined as as acceptable? And you said, well, I'm sure it's. Um, that's really hopeful. And yeah, that's that's it for my question so far.
And I just wondered, um, in your experience in working with the Montana Department of Transportation. Is this usually a year, a like year long process every time you put in an application or is it shorter or is there an average amount?
Um, everyone's a little different. Um, FedEx probably took us six months start to end that we were looking for a new approach. So there were designed to be reviewed hydraulics. Um, construction, longer process.
Could be less.
It it could be just a couple of months.
Is different than starting from scratch.
Yep, correct. It kind of depends what what they would like to see out of the. Of our recommendations if they want improvements.
Okay, thank you. Um, were there any other clar- clarifying questions for anybody else from? Mountain West Division?
Good question for Shannon, um, with that condition regarding the um. Property owners association assuming. But maintenance and fees related. But maintenance and fees related to the. Oh, open park space and the stormwater drains. Does the city then provide oversight in terms of? Following up. When it is something where, you know, they're taking care of it.
So there's a deed restriction, so it is city property. Um, it's common when it's in some of the other subdivisions that that are already in place. Where where they have open park space, HOA takes care of it. Code enforcement, if there's something that that isn't complying with city codes. We address that with the HOA.
And I hope. Sorry, Shannon, you mentioned HOA and so the very last page of the document, it has a summary of covenants. So that did deal with some individual questions.
Yeah, I was just, I was just curious with the condition. Yeah.
Jim, would you have a question?
I just want to be reminding you this, I just um. Our wonderful papers are kind of blazing headline that there's a park Livingston. I drove by there a couple of times today. And a large proportion of that is the wetland, if I'm not mistaken. mistaken. Um, I'm just curious how that would be used as a park other than as a. Bird watching or what? It's got many functions that are pretty sensitive.
Great question, Jim. Um, just again, the plating exercise, but we have talked about what is. The right type of use, if that is dedicated and open to the public. Um, you can see in the the maps, both wetland delineation, the photography, um, there's a. There's a raised, almost looks like a levy or an old roadbed that runs through the bottom. Third, near the half blood mark and um, that is not wetland because it again is higher. And just one conceptual thought is you put, you know, a trail there with maybe a seating area at the end and it would be used exactly as you suggested, maybe just. Bird watching or people from PFL or FedEx or any other developments, just having a moment of repose, a little Eddie out space, if you will. But pretty much restricted, you know, to that as whereas the southern. Open space lot is more of just a not, well, it's non-wetland grassland area and that might be conducive to more of a. Natural finds walking path where you could actually, you know, have a dog on leash and or get your steps in at lunch or, you know, whatever your, whatever. Yeah, yeah, but to the to the south closer to um, the interstate.
Wants to put it up on the map or on the.
There's a natural place where you can provide some limited access. Um, but yeah, we're not certainly talking parkland in terms of the kids practicing. The the wetlands delineation that was done and we got it done twice. Takes a pretty expansive view. If they find one cattail or other types of grass. As a person who walked for eighteen years, walked my dog every single day out there, two or three times a day. There's only about an acre and a half that is wet most of the time, but that's, those are the rules. And so it's essentially undevelopable. But there are ma- many, many, many of the fourteen acres that are delineated wetlands. Are walkable and playable, not soccer field, you're right, but uh, certainly exploring and walking.
Okay, and um, my question was. Um, who's putting in a trail in that area? Or, you know, is it just gonna be natural because people walk there a lot? Or and how how wide is you put on this very edge, the the eastern edge, a public access easement on. Lots one and twenty-four. How how wide did you have that envisioned then?
Yeah, the easements, access easements are usually there's a standard defined by the city. Correct me, Shannon, to twenty or twenty-five feet. So it would be the required.
Twenty-five feet.
Um, you know, a a natural fines trail is typically four to six feet wide. So easily fits obviously in that space and even of, again, we're not proposing a shared use path of even. The biggest trail you can see would be like twelve feet wide would be half. So they're connected. That's the reason for the easement. Um, again, who does what improvements when? This is similar to the land use question of um. To be determined, you can see on the screen, we have just a a conceptual exhibit of um. You'll see, this is the wetlands, the east side of the pub, maybe you can't see it over here, where there's this area of high, high ground that could come out. Um, you know, this sort of a connections, again, we have to be sensitive to looking at that delineated wetland. You see more of a sort of more of a certitious path on the other piece. But this is like saying, is lot three gonna be a Starbucks or a town pump? I mean, it's, it's all conceptual. It's all, you know, just. Positive speculation and that there is this potential, but.
But I guess my question is, is it an expectation that it will be um, created by you as a divider?
Um, I think the the parkland ordinance has several categories of parks that the city deems. To be parkland, one of which is a natural open space. And to the point of preserving habitat. I think by definition, that means you maybe have little to no improvement and it is just what the definitions of a natural open space. So. Again, to be determined with the deed restriction. Um, a lot to be figured out, but it has the potential to be one of a couple of different types of open spaces.
And and just like, um, so you don't have to just have that one easement. It could be off of that road and come up to the upper hill.
Right, so in the third, so but the requirement that the city asked for previously. And then it's actually a subdivision regulation requirement that the open spaces be connected. So in the case of phase one, where the road isn't fully built over to that cul-de-sac you see on this image. We have to provide that connectivity from day one.
Right.
As the phases were developed, there would essentially be more and more access.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Shannon, just, just a reminder to the planning board members that. Again, impact fees do include parks, so as the lots be developed, they are gonna be paying into a parks. Impact fee that could be used to in to improve based on really what, how each lot is developed. So, you know, if there is a. Multi-family type development there. There may be some strong interest to have playground equipment or something of that nature and. Um, there would be some revenue from that development to go towards proper improvements.
All right, I think we're coming to the end of our clarifying questions unless there's.
One quick question. Um, how much in impact fees is expected to be generated by this? You know?
I have. I have no idea. It really depends on, I mean.
The nature.
Our our impact these are are really based on the meter size um, for each development. So. Um, it's really gonna be a function of of the the meter size and the water demand um, that each slot's gonna need.
Do we have any idea what the upper range might be? Would it be enough? I mean, I guess earlier it sounded like it could be up to. One point seven five or two million dollars an offsite. Improvements, would it be enough to cover that?
It really depends on what you're talking about, because again, we have impact fees that are specific for water, for sewer, for parks, for police, for. Fire, so it depends on what.
Okay.
If we're talking water and sewer again, it gets back to that. Possible creating, you know, an SID waiver, bringing in the Justin property as a as a. To be included in that and then spread those proportionate costs accordingly.
I'm I'm not sure everybody really catches it, you know, these maps are by and for.
So would you mind stopping up there so that the folks at home can catch you?
I'm I'm not sure, no one's spoken about it today and I'm not sure if that map makes it clear. Uh, when when PFL located out there and requested to be annexed into the city, we spent in today's dollars about two and a half million dollars. To run the city sewer and water line out to that area and then spent more to run it from the property edge. Up all the way around to behind the brown residential building that is not. A part of this subdivision formerly known as the Bagel Shop for those who've been here a while. Um, and then. City uh, works did, I I think with a lot of foresight, but they required that the sewer and water, which goes along that top road. Right to below that arrow there to to make a full loop. And that loop was in and that loop was done at, I believe, twelve-inch. Water, ten-inch sewer, that right? Yeah, which is, which is huge, but that was done not to accommodate any projected use here. Cause that's really big. It was done to accommodate the long-term master plan that we were told about by. Uh, Shannon's predecessor twenty years ago to eventually let it go across the road where that little. Knife edges, go over to the Justin property, then turn north, go under the tracks and go back to the two million gallon water uh. Tower, water tank up on the hill. So that's a big loop. And apparently they like subloops because they're self-healing, because if something breaks, you close off on this side and this side and everybody else still keeps their water. So. This is four and a half million dollars of city sewer and water infrastructure that's been paid completely privately so far. And so I would anticipate that when you go across and around, probably be an SID that covers everybody going all the way back to. Kenya Noble. Um, and all the way around through all the residential future stuff on the north side. So it's, you know, this is just long-term and I remember objecting uh, to his predecessor saying. PFL is gonna use almost no water. I think a two-inch main would be fine. He goes, this isn't just for you. This is long-term planning. And so the city's been smart enough all along to make sure that's always been taken into account.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, um, I think that will conclude our clarifying questions. And would you like to take a five-minute break and then have public comment? That we can. Sure, sounds good. Okay, five-minute break. You set the timeline for it. Right back. All right, we're gonna open it up for uh, public comment on the subdivision under review. Anybody want to make a comment? And Jennifer, are you doing the timer? Okay, hang on one second. And of course, I don't want to sign the sheet, because I didn't think about that, though. You can say your name.
It'll be recorded.
That's okay. You're ready.
Okay, I may be a little bit over the four, but there's a lot going on here. Good evening, board. I am Kim Cochran, President of Friends of Park County. My address is sixty Majestic Ridge Trail Livingston. The Mountain View subdivision and the development it authorized remains inconsistent. With seven different objectives, goals and strategies. Of our growth policy. Objective two point one one. Growth policy goal three point one. Strategy three point one point one point four. Objective three point four, objective four point three point three, objective six. Point one point one, objective six point two point three. I'm not gonna discuss them now because my time is short and new factors have come up. The applicant's resubmission does not even attempt to address. Those inconsistencies with the growth policy. Even though they were identified in the city's findings of facts and conclusions of law more than nine months ago. That represents seven independent reasons for denial of this application. To recommend approval, this planning board would have to repudiate its prior decision. Findings of facts and conclusions addressed. That the initial application failed to meet the primary subdivision criteria of Montana code annotated. Seventy-six dash three dash six oh eight, parent three, parent A. Relating to. Surface water contamination from runoff, impacts on wildlife habitat. Connecting to open space areas to better protect habitat. Public health, safety risk from fires, winds, traffic and proximity to the railroad and I ninety. If this application was defective for those reasons a year ago, it's still defective today. We have incorporated in our written materials, all our objections. From the prior hearing and we incorporate them into the record in this proceedings. This applicant had nine months to address those concerns. They did not address one of them in this application. Now they're saying it's thirty-three percent smaller. It's ten acres smaller, but this is phase one. They're not gonna stop at phase one. They're gonna go on in phase two or three or four. They say, we can't give you firm numbers because we don't know what's going to go on these lots. Mr. Field said previously, we're gonna offer them them in the free market system, whoever wants to buy them. They can do whatever they want. You're buying the pig in the poach and you're being cut a thousand times. By not considering what you did before and they didn't comply with.
Thank you. Thank you for your public comment.
And thank you for your work in there.
Is there anybody else who would like to give public comments?
Good evening, or keep this short, we could put it in four minutes. I'm Tom Blue Rock. I'm also a board member of Friends Park County. One of Kent's colleagues. I'm just here to reinforce our concerns about the impact of this kind of commercial sprawl on the. Health and vitality of our downtown as well as the kind of impression that it. Makes to the to the visitors and residents of Livingston. We all wish we could turn back time sometimes and if we look at the evolution of this. Of of the development proposals on this property, it was started in al- almost twenty years ago. As a, as a light industrial, as a light industrial use. It was, it was only only elevated to highway commercial in nineteen, in twenty eighteen. And we've gone from something that we need that doesn't compete with downtown. And and would be a relatively relatively benign and 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 nice-looking entrance to town to something where anything goes. You could cover that, cover that parcel with five, with five-story buildings. I also have to comment on the article, the paper this morning, but you commented on Jim about about the park layer. The reality is this park is two disconnected parcels separated by property subject to future development. They just removed the parcels from. From the PFL parcel, but the amount of developable land is still the same. The northern fourteen acres is seventy-five percent sensitive. Sensitive wetlands in the southern is, has no road access and just a a skinny little, 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 little thing in between. With that developable property, property in between that implies it's gonna, it's gonna spread east. To be a meaningful park, the open space would have to be continuous, accessible and usable and as none of those things. Is this a gift or just simply a way to, for the developer to unload his undevelopable property of the city so he doesn't have to take care of it? With his property owners association. Um, seems, seems, you know, seems weird. Anyway, the, anyway, the. The proposal really does call into question and the the oversupply of of commercial property, which will create sprawl. As we, as we go through implementing the the growth policy. We're happy to be partners in that effort. Thank you and thank you for your time and spending so much time with me there. I know it's important.
Appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? Patricia?
Patricia Grabo two oh four East Calendar. I was on the city commission when we annexed printing for less. I don't have much time to talk to you, but I fought it. With everything I had because I knew that this day would come. And it was, when we annexed it, it was very innocent. It is innocent no longer. Uh, I just have to address two things. First of all, that is not a wetlands. It is a creek. And that is a lake and that agglent property is cannot be annexed into the city because it's that close to the railroad. And um, so that the, he has the water rights. so that the, he has the water rights. Aglin has some second water rights. Adams has the first water rights for Aglin Creek, which empties into Fleish Creek. He is going into conservation easement. He owns thirty-five acres because of prom horn come to his lake all the time to feed, and he is going to try to preserve this. Now, I've been involved in this for seventeen years. I used to watch, it's a, according to Tom Lemke, who is the biologist, by the way, this growth policy is for the town that is fifty-two miles from Yellowstone National Park, that is part of the migratory animals that's come out of Yellowstone Park. Prom horn, as you know, probably migrate hundred seventy-two miles around every year, and we were even gonna put a highway um uh oh, a way across I ninety for the number of prom horn that were there. Voyage has about thirty prom horn that use their property all the time. What do you mean that's not impacting the, the wildlife of that area? And our growth policy is very specific about this. Also, I, this, as I said, okay, I have to go into this. But this, you know, when you have uh somebody paying the bill for what is, and they call it a wetlands. He's the guy paying the little bill. Of course, they'll call it a wetlands. It is not a wetlands. It is a creek. And it is attributed to Yellowstone. Now, the other thing is that it's eighteen years ago when I fought this annexation. I still, my grandfather got to Livingston eighteen eighty-five, built the Grable Hotel nineteen oh three. One of the things that I was adamant about was that we would not turn into um Columbia Falls or Great Falls and ruin our downtown. Well, this will. And if you go to strategy um four point, three point one point four, it, it, it will just hurt our downtown terribly. It will, we, we already have a study, and I will get this for this committee. University of Montana does Travis Studies on, on tourism. And in fact, only five percent of the people who will turn off and all their things that they are planning hotels in another town. All those things. Only five percent will come to our downtown. It jeopardizes our downtown. This is not infill development. This is not smart growth. There were sixteen hundred of us who believed in the growth policy, believed in what we were doing, did not want sprawl, and we said it as clearly as we possibly could. So I don't think you're getting all the information you need today, and I certainly don't think you have the information just on the water alone to, to make a decision on this particular subdivision. Uh, please, please do not accept this today. It is, I'm fighting it still. And it's, it's become. I'm sorry, it's a boondoggle. I was starting concerned.
Thank you, Patricia. Appreciate your input. Did you want your map back? That, that's okay.
I would like to testify.
Um, I have sure. Somebody else before you, and um I will call on you after this person is going to speak. Okay.
My, excuse my voice from the smoke. Um, my name's Kathy Foot. I'm a board member with Friends of Park County. I'm a fourth generation Montana. And all I wanna say is if the application is news, the same errors apply. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and for anyone else we need to do? Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak? Before we go to the people online? Okay. Um, I can't tell who raised their hand or but someone that's just signed it as Friends of Park County. Um, I think it's Robert Liberty.
All right. Ms. Foot has covered the point that this is the same objections whether or not it's a new application.
Hey, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name's Robert Liberty. I'm a consultant for Friends of Park County. So my address would be the same as the client's address. Um, I'm just reiterating what Ms. Foot testified that the city's taking positions, a new application, it's fine. All of the objections uh referenced to the old application apply to this new application. So Friends of Park County is making those same arguments as tonight and in its September uh twenty twenty-two testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert, for testifying. Is there anybody else online that would like to make a comment? I'm see who they are. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment online? I don't see any hands. I don't see any. Okay. Then I will close public comment at this time. And we will move to deliberation. So the way I think that would be the most effi- efficient way to do this is to make a motion that um is what the staff report recommends. And understanding that by making a motion, you can approve, conditionally approve or deny. But that puts on the table something to discuss. And it puts on the table, um, you can amend um different items on here. But that way, it we have something to work with. So is there anybody who would like to make a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to deny the application. I'll second that.
All right, is, okay, so it's been um drawing the blank. It's been moved to deny the application. And second, is there a discussion?
Do I start?
I think go ahead.
Um. I appreciate um the additional effort that was put into this application. Um. Appreciate the advice from the applicant's legal counsel. Um. And so my, my comments will start um as they apply to the primary criteria. Um, I'm actually gonna start by, by talking about one of the stated purposes of the subdivision regulation, uh the Livingston subdivision regulation. Uh, one of those stated purposes includes the avoidance and minimization of congestion, and that's um kind of part of the impetus of those questions that I had. Um. So thank you again for, for all of your answers and that decision. It was really, really helpful. Um, we, we heard uh from the transportation engineer that the preferred level of service um by the state is level service C. Uh, we see in the application um at the ninety-fifth percentile, and I didn't kind of get into that. Um, but at the ninety percentile, we see um at some, at some peaks, level service D, so failing um by the states, by the states set um threshold there. Um. I'm focusing mostly on traffic and transportation, because that's my area of expertise, and so uh that's, you know, what I'm bringing to, to the board. Um, and I have a lot of concerns around that traffic and congestion, particularly in instances maybe even beyond that ninety-fifth percentile. Um, eighteen days of the year would be outside of that ninety-fifth percentile. Um, and if we think about the winter times when I ninety gets closed and um all of the I ninety traffic gets routed through Livingston, it goes right past um this potential uh development. Um, and the, the trip generation estimates, which I'm gonna get into that a little bit too. Um, already within the ninety-fifth percentile estimate uh a unsatisfactory level of services. And I'm gonna stop saying level service, and I'm gonna call it congestion. Um, we're, we're really just talking about the amount of time people are waiting in their cars. Um, I think when we think about those impacts um in extreme events, it's, it's been a year since we had an extreme event um flooding the Yellowstone. I think the, the town is pretty aware of the possibility of extreme events. Um, and some, and that includes a very frequent extreme event of the closing of the interstate um and the routing of traffic right by this proposed development. Um. So with the um, we're told uh conservative estimates, so conservative on estimating a high number of trips. Um, we see an unsatisfactory uh level of congestion within that ninety-five percentile. Um, I am very concerned about what would happen outside of that. I'm also a little bit suspicious of the figures while, and that is said with all due respect, because I really, really appreciated um your explanations, and I think um, I think that with those with those um supposed uses, or, and it's not even proposed, but it's um with those hypothetical uses. Uh, there was there was a large emphasis on light industrial, which is a very low um trip generating use. If you look at that table um which is on page one eighty, um about sixty-five percent of the estimated development by my kind of back of the napkin figuring is uh is attributed to light industrial, producing only eight hundred and four trips out of that ten thousand trips that um uh gross trips that, that they estimated. Um. And, you know, I, I trust that, that they, they came to these figures in good faith. Um, but as we've discussed many, many times, we don't, we have no idea what's going to be um put on this development. We're just talking about we're just ta- talking about subdividing land and putting it out into the market. So what we have proposed here, there could be way more trips, or there could be way fewer trips. Uh, my concern is the, the scenarios in which there are way more trips. Um, Amy asked about the, the deduction from that ten thousand um. And, and we see a little bit more than twenty-five percent of um the total estimated trips being projected to be internal capture. Uh, that seems a little, uh, that I find, I find that figure to be very surprising. I'm gonna give an example with the hotel. Um, they expect four hundred daily trips from the hotel and two hundred of those to be internally captured. So that would mean that of all the trips to and from the hotel, half of them never leave the, the subdivision. I was reviewing um a paper authored by my doctoral advisor um that said the best, that really, really high quality um mixed-use developments, planned mixed-use developments um typically produce somewhere around thirty percent internal capture rates. Leaving this to the open market to develop um as uh the market matures, um. I think it would be silly to expect that, that the market is going to independently produce an excellent uh planned mixed-use development. So that, that rate of twenty-five percent I find to be high um and makes me suspicious of that total new external trip figure of four thousand, which on its own produces um congestion that I think we've been told would be untenable by the, the state standards. Um. Now um, we've heard mixed uh advice on whether or not we can consider the growth policy. Um, but I did hear from uh these applicant's attorney that we cannot make a decision based solely upon the growth policy. Um. So I'm gonna add a consideration of the growth policy to my other um primary criteria that I was just discussing. So there has been, from public and from the applicant, a little um disagreement about what constitutes infill. Um. And the applicant's perspective is that infill is any increase in intensity within the existing footprint of the city. Um, I disagree, um, and I don't think that large lot subdivision at the periphery um of our community constitutes infill. I think it's actually the opposite of infill. Um, and I think that calling it that is uh disingenuous. So um, I think that I'm, I'm not gonna get into the goals and strategies of the growth policy, because a lot of us were, were part of constructing that growth policy. So a lot of us are very familiar with that. Um, and I think that we can agree that infill and um focusing growth in, within the um areas of high intensity of use in Livingston was a, was an overarching theme of that growth policy, and I think that this um is largely the antithesis of that. Um, I've been rambling for a while, and so I'm happy to pass it on to someone else.
Okay, um. I just wanna clarify, trying to write down where you stood on the growth policy. So you were saying that you did not agree that you where were you in relation to the growth policy?
That this runs contrary to, that the proposed development runs contrary to many's important goals and strategies for growth policy. And specifically, I'm concerned those traffic concerns make me worried about the provision of, of local services. And they make me concerned about the health and safety of residents of Livingston.
Okay, Jonathan?
I have three areas of concern in the subdivision regulations. Um. One was uh the effect on wildlife, wildlife habitat. Um. I wasn't um staff's fault that we, they didn't get the uh letter till today, you know, it was dated June thirtieth. Um, but I think that we should, it, it recommends bear-proof trash cans and wildlife-friendly fencing, which the applicant uh did put in the, those covenants. I believe that if we move forward with approval, that should, condition of approval should be to make those covenants or bear-proof trash cans and wildlife-friendly fencing a condition of approval. Um, but as it stands now, I don't think it complies with that. Um. The effect on local services, I just don't think that we've got enough information here to show that this is gonna pay for itself. I think that the water loop and the um new main are very expensive, and we don't have any idea exactly how much money's gonna come in and impact fees. Uh, I'm not convinced they will cover it. Um, and I think that that is something that I doesn't, I don't know if the city and city taxpayers can afford to have um sprawl like this. Um, if we do move forward with approval, condition of approval should be that the applicant um must not be able to, there must sign a label protest and SID to improve um the water main and the water loop. And then I had concerns about um just kind of public health and safety. I found the information about fire danger uh lacking. I think that probably is a real concern, especially with some of the traffic concerns that Tori's talking about, especially with the interstate shutting down on a windy day when um traffic being backed up and the windy day could be when the fire from the railroad sparks and, or from the highway sparks and goes that way, and I think that this underestimates that. And then um I was concerned about just the connectivity of this. I think that the application talks about a conceptual shared use pass, a path designed for pedestrians and cyclists on Highway ten. Um, but I don't see a way to pay for that. And I don't necessarily know that it's like, that that would be safe. Um. So those are three of the concerns. And then um I did have one question for staff, which is, this says the Tiff district is This says the Tiff district is. Set to expire in twenty twenty-four. Do we know what's gonna happen beyond that? Does the city have intentions of? Of continuing that, or do we, do you know anything about what would happen with that?
I do not, but I had. I had asked him a little about this. My understanding was. From talking to him and. If I got this wrong. Can elaborate on it, maybe even Shannon knows, but that the Tiff district right now. Does not actually encompass this area proposed to be subdivided. My understanding was it was pre for less. That's not correct.
No, I believe it's the entire property.
Okay. I. I do know the one thing Jim. Sort of impressed upon me was that. The only special improvement district that staff has right now recommended and anticipates coming out of this is that. A separate one for the bike path connections outside. Of the subdivision. There was no anticipation or expectation on the city's part. To extend that to. Or to create anyone. But. I would prefer to let. Grant returns, I think he's going to maybe discuss that, because that's sort of outside of my realm of. And and just clarify, Tiff is for everybody. I've seen from it financing district. I think it's called something else now technically at the state, but it's it's sort of the same thing.
Just one quick clarification. Chan, you talked about a special potential special district out there to help pay person. Structure dangers, is that right?
Yes.
Remember, you have to speak up louder. Was that, is that everything, Jonathan?
Yeah, so I guess I just wanted to make that clear that Shannon did talk about another special improvement district for. Infrastructure. In that area. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? In regard to the motion, can I?
I would like to say I felt a little bit intimidated by the admonishment to. Of all the sticking to this and that, and you know. Just to say. It was a little bit intimidating. But. In fact, we are a planning board, we are not planners. And we have. Look at things from the perspective of our community and what our community sees its future or wants to see in its future. My lovely friend back there. I recall the just horrible days back in. Early part of the two thousand. When the tyranny of the majority, I'm sorry, the tyranny of the minority. Was able to railroad things like this through. And we called it spot zoning. Back then. The city called it annexation. We didn't appreciate this long extension of Highway ten out to interchange. But it got through, and it's the way things go. Part of the reason I was a little offended by not being able to speak, because the the. The applicants spoke about. How they were going to improve the West End. And they were going to improve our city. By putting a. Spot zoned. Interchange out there with God knows what. Anything goes as the. Famous play. The idea of it being infill, that's. Also, I agree with. The best of bogus statement, that's. Not what infill is. The traffic, that's another concern, these are going through the list. Improving the aesthetics and the character of the gateway. We were able to stop the. What was it, that Love's Truck Stop, because people saw that that was a bogus. Argument that we were gonna have a beautiful. Gas station for people to get it in on and off the highway. Just use our lovely. Open space to fill that need. And the growth policy, obviously, it is a. The. The city is. Obligated to consider. You don't necessarily make any judgment or any decisions on it. But they must. Underline, consider. And there are many things on a growth policy that are. Very lovely, that need to be considered. And many of these things are antithetical to that. Again, the fire. Wildland fire. The person who. Drags a chain on the freeway and the fire starts right at. The boundary of the property. You know. Come up with all kinds of. Scenarios in our changing climate. Again, the unknowns, the build-out, what's happening here is, we're just gonna do lines on a piece of paper. But. From a from a citizen planning perspective. Is a bad place to draw those lines. And it doesn't fit with the feature. Any any kind of future vision of this community. Just to create. Brawl out through the west. And join our friends in Bowman. And the fish wild parts did mention wildlife out there, the letter. Woke up off the. Bears and. Tongue horns and so on. And it's a. A viable. All yet small, but it's a viable wildlife. Habitat out there. That is truly a concern. To maintain that. Thank you.
There anybody else who would like to speak to the motion?
Oh, although. We'll try to speak up. Yeah. I would have loved that if this land had not been annexed twenty years ago. I think that's great. I would have been with you and Patricia. I think the issue is now it has been annexed and infrastructure has been built around it. Is from a county perspective. That development is going to occur somewhere. There is greater regulation, the infrastructure is present in the city. I I know there's concerns, I have great concerns about the wildlife, but it's gonna, the development occurs outside of the city. It also may occur in places. That are migration routes. I understand my fellow board members' concerns as well. But I do think efforts were made to address. Goals of the growth policy.
Yeah, I believe that. Thank you, Chan. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the motion?
Yes, it's my turn, so. Based on what I'm hearing. And based on the six criteria, I'm not hearing anything, and please fellow board members, correct me if I'm wrong, but. I'm not hearing anything. Concerning on. Criteria number one, effect on agriculture. I'm not hearing anything on criteria number two, effect on agricultural water users. I have heard. I think both Tori and Jonathan. Speak on. Their concern on the effect of local services. Nothing. Specific on the effect on the natural environment, but I I may. Be overlooking that. Heard Jonathan speak about concerns on criteria number five, effect on wildlife and wildlife habitat. More specific to bear-proof garbage cans, wildlife friendly fences, which. Certainly, we could add conditions to address those, and I agree with Jonathan in that. Respect. Last one would be the effect on public health and safety, and and I know Tori elaborated on his concern with traffic, and that's. That was the section that really the traffic study was identified in, so. I guess my question to the fellow board members with with the concerns that have been brought up. On. This denial motion, are are there conditions that we can put on this development that would satisfy? Us as a board? I I have several. But in a motion to deny, I'm not sure it's really the appropriate place to. Talk about conditions, so.
Amy, do you have anything you'd like to add at this point? No. That comes to me and. I also understand the concerns for the traffic. Having driven that road many, many times. With the curve and everything and all of that, it is. A potential for. Whatever is built out there to be. Added congestion and. The up to the Montana Department of Transportation, it sounds like more than anything to control. Control that aspect of it. The land has been annexed, it is part of the city. And. Although I. Don't believe that I would call it infill. It is part of the city and it's not in addition to the city. It is really hard to separate out what we can and cannot do as a planning board. You say. We like to have things in neat boxes and we like to know exactly what's going to happen. I'm very much that way, you know, I'd like to know, because it makes a difference on how, you know, you react. But that's not what is before us, what before us is. The fact that this land has been asked to be subdivided. That's what is before us. And. I don't know, you can't say that it's on in good faith, because that doesn't apply. The the rules are. This is land that is being asked to be subdivided. This is the size of the lots. And that is it. And it's it's being. Highway commercial with the rules that we again have no control over highway commercial. That's what it's zoned as. So we have to follow those rules. So. Bear that in mind. Of what our task is. Not necessarily what we want. But it's what we have to do, what what we have to follow. So. I'll stop there. Any other discussion?
I I guess I can make a comment.
Sure.
So maybe I have a competitive advantage or disadvantage, considering I wasn't on the planning board when this came up in previous. Months, so I don't have some of that back knowledge of what occurred. But from what I'm hearing, of course, that the traffic risk is huge. I drive that road to Bozeman every single day. I've been stuck. In the long lines of traffic. Coming home. However, in my mind. There's a need for this type of development, right? We have that. Feel-good idea of infill and whatnot, which I completely support. However, there's also the not in my backyard type of. Of mentality of, do I want a gas station downtown Livingston? Of course not, right? So there is a place for these types of things. We talk about adding hotel rooms. I welcome more hotel rooms, right? We get rid of some of the VRBOs. There's not a hotel room in this town that I would. Sleep in at this point, right? So of course, people are looking for VRBOs. So maybe we we allow to have a hotel room, hotels built. So we can eliminate some of these VRBOs and put those back into. Housing for our local people. So, those are my thoughts. Any other added? Thoughts at the moment?
I guess I. I'm here.
No.
I guess I'd like to, you know, further my discussion with Tori and and. Is, in my mind, valid concerns on on traffic and. I guess his thoughts on, you know. MDT having jurisdiction, you know, on Highway ten. Probably being aware that MDT has done a corridor study that does include, you know, Highway ten, I ninety addresses. I ninety closures specifically for Livingston and and may not know, but you know, there are projects in the works right now. Just based on recommendations from that corridor study. I can't tell anyone that those are gonna solve the problems that this development may have, but I know there. There are some measures in place to at least address that, at least the I ninety closure portion of it. There's some other things that, you know, maybe haven't been discussed tonight is is we as a city. We can make a request to the Transportation Commission at the state of Montana. To even look at, you know, reducing speeds on Highway ten. I can't. Predict if they will follow that recommendation, but I know they'll do a speed study and investigate and provide some factual information for our community, so. I guess. My my question is really back to Tori, is there is there any, is there any way to solve or to mitigate? I guess your traffic concerns with this development specifically.
Thanks, Chan, and I I think that that's a reasonable way to. To think about the problem. And. But I have I have somewhat, to me, the the problem is less about. The specific intersections and what treatments might be made to the intersections. To mitigate. The problem. But it's really, we're making a decision about whether or not to create the problem, because it's the trip generation. That creates congestion at intersections, right? And so we're deciding whether or not to allow. The creation of that problem of trip generation. So I see it. Less of, okay, well, we'll we'll create the problem and then how do we solve, how do we treat the the symptom? But instead, let's avoid creating a problem first, and that problem is the trips generated. I mean, the problem is really the wide variety of 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 potential outcomes of trips generated by subdividing this land. That's how I see it. And I and I think that. If we if we get to. To a point where we're deciding to create that problem, then that's kind of where that's when. That's when I think it makes sense that MDT has jurisdiction over that road, and they're gonna do their best. And I and I trust, like, I I have gone through that process myself, and I trust. The integrity of transportation engineers, and I think that they're gonna do their best to make it as safe as possible. And reduce the congestion as much as possible, but we're, in my opinion, we're deciding about whether or not to create that problem in the first place tonight. And so my my position is that we shouldn't create that problem in the first place.
Interesting, Tori, I actually, I was thinking about it from a different perspective, in that the the problem in a way was created twenty years ago. But I'd like to think. You know, the city can be innovative moving forward and thinking about. To your point, how to then mitigate the problem, but.
The the problem is less severe right now, when that is a single lot. That can all, that has limitations on how it can be developed, and we exacerbate that problem by cutting it up into twenty-four separate boxes.
Right, but the the other issue is given the given the layout of the city. Where then do you see things like a highway commercial occurring without creating?
So I would I would refer you back to our future land use map where we did that exercise. And in my, for the my my contribution to that exercise. Was the the mixed, the addition of the mixed-use areas, which we put. In the center. Of the city. And that is, that would be my definition of of infill.
Certainly, this is Beney Pacific. Nineteen years, eighteen years ago, this was zoned. Highway commercial. Right, or is that what the hell it was?
It was light industrial.
And then it was zoned again. Twenty eighteen or nineteen. Twice it's been zoned, rezoned.
No, I think zoned the first time light industrial.
Okay, so we rezoned it, so it's possible to rezonate again. Got you? Got you.
It's absolutely.
Yeah, we could bring it back to light industrial. That would solve the problem. And we could have the, somebody want to subdivide those locks into light industrial uses. That would be, I think that would be amenable to a lot of people as opposed to the anything goes scenario. Uh, so that's a consideration just to. Just to say we're not stuck in some place, we screwed up and we're going to keep screwing up. That's my, my simple ten way of describing that, but.
Appreciate your comment, John. I'm, I'm going to put Jennifer on the spot and just, I guess, maybe give everyone a little bit of a. Education on how a property can go about getting rezoned. I know we're a little bit off topic here, but I think it's valuable.
I have to look into it because I haven't been to it yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I need to, just throwing that out, is it possible?
It, it would need to go through the zoning commission. They would need to ultimately have to have city commissioner approval, but it would have to start with the property owner.
Exactly, yep.
That's. So did that mean that property owner has to request the zone change?
Based on my knowledge of.
Let me look.
Process, yes, but.
Yeah.
I guess. Outside of the transportation concern or traffic concern. Are there conditions that would, that would address some of the other concerns? I may be putting Jonathan on the spot, but I mean, I, I recall you and, and I support, you know. A waiver of SID creation for, you know, utility, you know, uh. Capacity expanding ability and projects or water leaks in addition to the, to the trade.
Well, outside.
Yeah. It's already included in the staff report, um. You know, we, we talked about a gateway to our town. I, I think personally, I think PFL is a lovely looking facility, um. I've known quite a few employees that work there, um, I think. Uh, it's a nice facility with, um, some nice outdoor amenities, um, we had spent landscape, again, my personal opinion. With it being a gateway to, one of the gateways to Livingston and our, um, central business district, um. City center, which is on the highway sign, um. Uh, one thing that we've always talked about as a community, I think this project could be a partner with is, um, putting a. Big nice welcome to Livingston sign. Uh, we're not allowed to put those signs in MDT right away, but if we had a place. On one of these parcels near Highway ten, um. That, that could be a nice addition and, um, a nice. Way of, uh, wayfinding for people knowing that they've entered the city limits of our town.
Hey, um. In order to make sure that I have. From my notes. Because I'm reading here according to the rules of what we have to do. Since the motion is on the floor to deny the staff report's recommendation. The board must clearly ID their reasons to not support staff's recommendations, findings, and tie their decision to specific review criteria. So. I want to just go through and Tori, you tied yours to F, which was the. Public, um.
Division of Local Services.
National Services, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Safety and local services, I think.
So it was due to. That's on local services. And public safety. Okay, and the reason being too much congestion and. Um, well, what else?
Just the impacts of that, of that kind of unknown congestion on, um, extreme events.
So you're saying you did not agree with the staff report because you have to have specific. Reasons and rationales and supportive.
I.
Documentation in order to, before we vote, one way or the other. It was the other way, you'd have to do the same thing. So I'm just trying to clarify, um.
So in the staff report, Jen.
That report, which was F. Well, did you want to maybe still, there were two things that you touched on.
Yeah.
One was effect on local services and one was the health and safety.
Yeah, so, um.
And I, Jonathan, don't.
Go for it.
So may I?
Sure.
I'm sure. So I have, and I didn't necessarily attribute who said what, but I did, um. Take comments that were, um, findings of facts, separate from what the staff report found, um. And, and noted up down. So for effect on local services, increase, increase in traffic and congestion, um, will have an impact on, um. Uh, fire protection streets, um. Or sorry, law enforcement or EMS, uh, the new water main and loop, um, would, um. Place additional.
That was Jonathan's comment.
Okay, yeah, so, and I'm going by the effect of local services versus, if that's okay, because that's.
She's taking now, so that can.
Yeah, so the water loop.
Increase traffic, the impact fees, um, likely are not adequate to, uh, to support the, the new water main and loop that may be required. That was one I had not noted down for effect on local services, and that was Jonathan. And I had not enough money to pay for the water with this, what Jonathan said.
Yeah, she, yeah, she said the same thing in a different way.
Yeah. Was there?
So, uh, and then, and then the. The same impact of the increased congestion, um, and kind of unknowability. Of, of traffic would, um, affect public health and safety.
So unknown. Are you saying unknown?
Unknowable amount of traffic.
Depending on the level of.
Unowable amount of traffic.
Um. Due to unknowns. Of building structures.
Do the ambiguity of the, the land uses because we're, we're not. We're, we're in a, in a zone that has infinite land uses. And there's really no way of knowing what the market will do once this is sliced up.
Jennifer, did you have anything else on those in that category? Because I agree with Shannon in that we don't. Have anything on, from any feedback on number, uh, effects on agriculture, effects on agricultural water into facilities. Um, or effect on natural environment. So the effect on wildlife and wildlife habitat. Um, I have one.
Effects on natural environment, somebody discussed the concerns with impacts to wetlands.
Do what?
Wetlands.
So, yeah, wetlands, I believe Jen did, so that was tied to that.
So, in fact. So Jim, you were saying that there would be an impact on the wetlands?
Um. Yes.
And that was based on what? Information?
Um. You're asking me to do my, my geotechnical report out here. There will be significant changes to the. Movement of water in that subdivision. I know there're going to be storm, stormwater and all that. But that's all gone somewhere and it could affect those. Whether they're wetlands or I think, uh, Andrew said they were delineated wetlands. The EPA has a different definition than maybe we do.
So you're saying creation of structures or would impact the wet, wetlands, is that what you're saying?
Just any kind of, any kind of human activity is going to be toggling down to that area, so. It's, there will be attempts to capture it all, I'm sure, but it's. They are vulnerable.
Okay. And Shannon, you had one or about the SID and that ended up getting put under F?
The effect on local services.
Oh.
See.
But, but a condition on that concern, or address that concern with a condition.
The, yeah, the, the labor protest or the creation of an SID for. And that was, that was. Mitigating, uh, condition that could be placed.
Yes.
Because the concern is.
The impact on. City residents and the financial burden of projects.
Condition that the, that the SID would impact. Um, citizens. Is that what you're saying?
To just, yeah, the, the financial burden. My infrastructure improvements.
Okay. All right, and then, John, did you have anything else?
I, I think the bear proof. You know, bear proof garbage cans and wildlife friendly events, whether addressed. In the covenants. It could be.
They're already.
Condition that the board puts. Those are replant.
It was already in the, in here under the third one, all garbage shall be cured and animal food containers are being made unavailable to. That was in the, in the covenants.
That's not guaranteed in this application.
The way that it's, this is.
The way that it's so, and I, I looked at this and, and again, I'm, I'm sorry, we don't have an attorney here, but typically. For other land use applications, if a developer puts something in here, it's on the record. However, the way that this is worded to me, it says this list is not intended to be all inclusive for replacement of the actual covenants. So I don't, I think that would maybe make it. Perhaps not legally binding.
Okay.
Unless something else were done, again, that'll layer.
I, I can tell everybody from practical standpoint, you know, as the director and when we move forward with. Subdivisions that are approved by the commission, it's really nice to have. All those conditions in the staff report and be able to kind of go through and. Check them off as we work on design reviews and even construction, um, inspection and kind of final completion by the city, um. It makes it nice to have that list all in one spot.
Okay, but for the, for purposes of tonight.
Yeah.
Do we need to list that as a reason for denial was that there weren't bear-proof garbage containers? I, I don't know, but I'm, I think that's a mitigation suggestion that you could include in there as part of. All right, so we don't put it in.
I think we should put it in. The findings of facts. Because I think that's one of the reasons I'm voting that way.
Okay.
Which is.
Any other thoughts on that? As a, as, as a finding of fact? No thoughts? Michael, we won't just add it there, um. That's all that I have written down, uh, that. And I guess overall I heard that, I mean, in general. Principles of the growth policy were not being, um. Followed in principle. Or how would you like to say that?
And just one more thing that I, not just Jen mentioned, but I think other people maybe picked up on and, and maybe that was just public comments, but for health and safety. And there was discussion about, um, fire concerns. And just wildland open, that is, um, the land proximity to a highway, there's cars, chains, dragging, sparking. I just want to make sure that was in there.
And approximately railroads.
City relevance.
I guess, just a point of order, Madam Chair, I mean, it's, to, to make the list, there need to be a consensus. From the members, because, um, while I appreciate. The concern for wildfire, I also know it's within the city limits, uh, they're fire hydrants and I trust that the fire chief, um, stated that he had no concerns.
I think that's a good question, just because I'm a little confused because there in, some of, some of what we're saying is conjectures and we have received letters from. Next, where I call expert, um, so I'm, I'm just a little bit confused in terms of what brings then. By finding a fact. Right, and that's what we're trying to, to clarify, to pinpoint, what is the finding of fact before we go to a vote? So that we have those, these reasons that we're listing. And what we would be voting on as to why you would deny this subdivision. What we are listing. Is what we are using. Does everybody's clear that's, we can't just say arbitrarily, we're going to approve or deny something. So.
Man, sure. Um, just to speak to that, much of what we're talking about conjecture, because we have a conjecture proposal, so. We're going to talk about conjecture of how much traffic is going to be there, how much congestion, so we have to cancel all this stuff out. So I, I don't think it necessarily needs to be. Because we can't, there's no hard fact because we don't know what's happening.
Right.
So, but all these things are conjecture, they're possibilities and because of their possibilities are stronger than not. Then there's reason to deny.
Right, and I believe that, um, the point was made that the, uh, for the fire issue, uh, that the. City Fire Chief, um, did not find there to be a problem with fire. Um, that is different than wildfires, but that is the point that is, was being made.
And, you know, what's the question? Is it the question whether they can access the property to fight a fire? Or is there a fire danger? So that's, I guess, to be clarified.
And was there anything else? Uh, Jen, that you had?
No, it's how I defined it sometimes.
Findings of that. All right, then. I'm not going to repeat all that. I think I can get it all down succinctly. Um, is there, does anybody have a problem with the findings of facts as we have stated so far? That's what they are. Okay. Then. The motion before us is to. Right here, each piece of paper. And. Sorry, I'm just getting a super quick review of the MCA, um, I. This might make something a little simpler for you.
Okay, sure, um.
If a federal or state government entity submits a written or oral comment or an opinion regarding wildlife, wildlife habitat or the natural environment relating to a subdivision application. For the purpose of assisting a governing body's review, the comment or opinion may. Be included in the governing body's written statements. If the comment or opinion provides specific scientific information or a published study that supports the comment or opinion. Though I guess that's just to.
That'd be for the wildlife one. And I think the one that she had in question had to do with fire, um.
Oh no, I was sorry going back to that because I don't think that was mentioned. All right, so the motion before the board is to deny these. These staff reports. Um. Recommendation. For, uh. To deny a proposed, the proposed mountain new subdivision. Based on the findings of facts that as we listed. Okay. So. My listed people. I'm going to call your names and then you can go, okay, Tori.
For denial.
Or deny, please say that, that will clarify. Okay, Jonathan, maybe repeat the motion, okay, if I missed it. I did. Okay, the motion is to deny Mountain View subdivision. Based on findings of facts that we listed in discussion. And the motion was brought by Tori and Jonathan, and seconded by Jonathan. Hey, Jonathan.
For denial.
Okay, Taya.
Against denial.
I'm sorry, could you, against denial. Jim.
For denial.
Amy.
Against denial.
Shannon.
Against denial.
And myself, I'm against. That's one, two, three, four, four, so the motion fails. Do I have a motion on the floor for in support of?
Madam Chair.
Shannon.
I'll make a motion to approve. The Mountain View subdivision based on the conditions addressed in the staff report. And additional conditions as discussed by the board. Disgusted and approved by the board.
So you are making a motion for food with conditions as. I lost you half way through.
So I'm making a motion to approve. The subdivision with the conditions that are included in the staff report, so there are seventeen of those. And then additional conditions as approved, discussed and approved by the planning board.
So, could you clarify for me the additional, like that's seventeen conditions, and then what was that after that?
Just additional conditions as discussed and approved by the planning board.
But we haven't approved them yet, so you, you, we haven't stated them yet, so how can it be a motion? I mean, how can it be included in the motion?
Yes, I list the ones that I have written down.
You can amend, you can amend the original motion that you just said. And if there's further conditions, we can amend those into the motion.
Sure.
Is that right? May I recommend motion language since the first one was, was not passed. I believe what Shannon is trying to make a motion for. Is recommending approval with the conditions as included in the staff report with the additional conditions of approval being. The waiver of protest for an SID for water main.
Sewer.
And sewer. Another condition being to require the bear proof trash cans and wildlife safe fencing in the covenants. And.
That was something I thought of, but if we can throw it in there.
What was it?
And the, the, the allowance of a welcome to Livingston sign.
It would be requiring a, a welcome to Livingston sign as a good way on the subject property.
And, and I will say that there were some other possible conditions that were included in the staff report as far as. That's of parks, restrictions on park property, pet plant. Major store water.
Yeah, these are all included in the seventeen. Yes. One was not.
That that was included in the water, the protest.
Is, so that would be my recommendation for the condition.
Yes.
SID require bear proof and with fencing, wildlife safe fencing. Wildlife, oh, wildlife. Safe fencing and bear proof trash cans.
Or garbage be stored inside.
Or that garbage be stored inside.
That's just, that's what FWD recommended.
Okay. Stored inside, okay.
And may I, may I?
Sure.
That dogs be leashed.
That was the other one.
I'm sorry.
Dogs be leashed in public areas. Or in, in, on the entire property, basically, right? Is that what it amounts to? If you're going to make the motion. Yes, I do.
Okay, so.
Is it public property, or is that the right word? Dogs be leashed on public?
What, what is the policy?
Yeah, what is that?
For dogs.
We don't have a policy. Well, you do.
There are, there is a leash law.
For the open space.
Is it for, for open space?
Okay, or you could also just say as recommended, the, the covenants be amended as recommended by the. Fishmore life letter, if you wished.
But that doesn't have anything to do with the dogs.
And had other things too, but I, I wanted to mention those, and I can find to the language later, I can do that with you. Her. Okay, was there anything else that we had already discussed tonight? Wetlands, SID containers. And I don't know if this is a condition or not, but to, to continue to pursue. With MDT for congestion, I don't know, is that something that can be a condition, because we have no control.
Certainly provide comments to MPT, but I'm not.
I don't think. Can say.
Right, specifications.
I don't think, so I'm going to reiterate the motion, the motion is to approve with conditions. That, with the staff report seventeen conditions, and in addition. The waiver of protest for SIDs required bear proof and wildlife safe fencing. No allowance for a welcome to Livingston sign, and. The dogs must be leashed for public in open spaces per wildlife letter. Actually, I would just clarify what the SID was for, which was. For water. For, for water.
And sewer.
And sewer, as discussed by, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I ask our planning director a process question? Given, we have seven. Members here. Out of the nine total on board. Do we need a five votes in affirmative for. A vote to be considered a recommendation to the city commission?
I'm going to check, but I understand we asked you have a forum at tonight's meeting, and four out of seven would be a majority. And while she looks it up, because we, I'm about ready to call for the question, so we'll find out that answer before we take our vote.
We couldn't hear part of Tori's comments there, he was mumbling a lot.
I, I will repeat myself for the public, but I think that for the purposes of decorum, we don't appreciate a interjection to the meeting. I asked the planning director whether or not. Given the fact that we are missing two board members this evening. Whether we need five votes in the affirmative for it to constitute a recommendation to. Whatever the, whatever the vote is, whether we need five votes in the affirmative to constitute a recommendation. A majority recommendation to the city commission.
Good evening, thanks for having me, sorry to interject, that's a fantastic question, Commissioner Lyons. I would point the board to section twenty seven dash four of the Livingston municipal code. And subpart D of that refers to a quorum. That, so part states, a majority of members shall constitute a quorum. However, no action of the planning board is official unless authorized by a majority of the total membership of the board. At a regularly, regular or properly called special meeting, so. I would offer that as a, well, the language is fairly.
So, what does that, what does that mean? Could you please allow?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so. So, so while, while the, the board. Can meet and consider and act upon items with just a quorum. A majority of the total membership is read it, needed to move or to pass an action. And so if the total membership is nine, five votes would be needed in the affirmative to approve an action.
To recommend, but the denial. The, the motion, the denial motion failing should have been, okay.
No, so actually, it says no action of the planning board is official unless authorized by a majority of the total membership of the board.
So.
The last.
So that isn't official either then.
That's right.
So there's no, there was no way that any, well, you know how people would vote. So what do we do?
If, I mean, if we got five, we get five votes on something, that's, that would constitute an, an official action, but we need five.
There needs. So, so I would offer, you know, my interpretation would be that, that that motion died for, for lack of, you know, a full.
The first motion?
Yeah.
So we still take a vote on the second motion and see where we come with that.
And at this point, the motion is official until we have five.
Okay, alright, so I'm going to call for. The vote for this motion. Alright, Tori.
I don't think they will second the chair's motion today.
Oh, sorry, I'll say. So Shannon made the motion and Taya seconded the motion. Alright, and we're going to go through the vote. Tori. Jonathan.
Against.
Taya, four. Jim.
Against.
Amy, four. Shannon, four. And Stacy, I'm four. So we are at the same. What do you get? You get? No, that's what I got.
Yeah.
Four. I got one group, same. So. Just one that's out there, perhaps. Let me share, somebody else has another idea. The. Motion could be made to. Further consider this at either a special meeting, specially scheduled meeting. Or at the next regularly scheduled meeting, and I say the second with the understanding that. This also does need to go with the city commission and, and time constraints, so. I will that up to you, but I think if five out of seven or five were to. Approve a motion like that, I think that it would hold. For lack of a better term, because right now we're just at an.
So we, we do have to call a special meeting though.
I, I, unless you.
What are the time constraints on that?
Yeah, but our time constraints on the application are, October fifteenth is the sixty days from when. Sixty working days from when the. Sufficiency review was complete, so with the schedule of. Meetings right now, and I'm looking up the planning board meetings versus the city commission meetings second. So if the city commission were to. I'm sorry, if the planning board were to delay. Action until the next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be September twentieth. Then I believe the next, with noticing requirements, city commission meeting. I'd have to double check that, if we couldn't, if it could not be at the third meeting, does a special meeting need to, to have the fourteen day notice? Again, sorry, I wasn't.
All public hearings need to have fourteen day notice. And I think Grant is probably the expert on that.
Yeah, I, I actually, I would offer that, to the extent you folks do schedule a, or decide to schedule a special meeting. That a motion here tonight to continue this hearing until, until a date certain. Which would be this date of a special meeting, you would not need to go through with the noticing process, because.
Okay.
It's not any hearings, just a continuation of the variants, that would be my recommendation on a motion if the date is. In the future is, is the path that you folks would like to take, determine what the date is, and then a motion to continue that date certain.
Okay, so we'll start with that, let's have a motion to continue this public hearing first.
Should we, should we decide on date before we do that?
No, because if you, you need to make the, the motion to. Continue the hearing. So that then, the date is not dependent upon any one thing.
I understand it as a motion to continue to date certain, which means we've determined.
But what, we can't do that, we don't have the other two people here, so we can't do that to get their schedules to say, oh, well. We could, we could set a date and then have four people be available, right?
You know, unfortunately, I, I would opt into, I think Commissioner Lyons' interpretation there. If, if we are going to continue to a date certain, we need to stay with that date certain, as I do recognize that we don't have the benefit of, of the full membership this evening, but.
Alright, I'm happy to call all the board tomorrow, but can we do that without a date certain? No, I mean, once you decide the date certainly, if that's what you propose, I will get on it.
Do we need to do that now though?
That's what you're saying, is that we have.
Does the next planning board meeting work, or is that to, is that, does that not allow enough time for the city commission to do it?
Yeah, I, you know, certain.
What are the, yeah, what are the, the?
If we don't have to renotice.
Required dates that we have to make for this application.
So I, I believe as the, the director noted, the, the commission needs to act by October fifteenth, is that correct?
And the commission, the commission needs two meetings on this, correct?
No, no, it's, it's possible just one meeting, so. If, if I just plotted out, I believe your next regularly scheduled meeting is on or about September twentieth. No, no, it's it's possible just one meeting. So if if I just plot it out, I believe your next regularly scheduled meeting is on or about September twentieth. So you know, it it doesn't leave a a large window for the city commission, but we do have the ability to to call special meetings, just as you folks do. So leave it in your capable hands.
I would throw it, I mean, with September thirteenth. Second Wednesday of September with that.
And and does it include that Zoom, a Zoom?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, it is is just as good as being in person, right?
Shannon, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you see a benefit of do of scheduling it on a non-conventional planning board night as opposed to a planning board night? I the reason I ask is I I see scheduling it on an existing planning board night has our best chance of the folks who aren't here haven't already considered blocked out that.
I I was just trying to be respectful of Jennifer and and whatever decisions made, being able to have ample time to put that in the commission packet was finally.
I don't think it works. I mean. And I will say if you if you make it before, so the week before that September twentieth, I'm not sure that there's a benefit because we don't have three city commission meetings in September. So the next after even September thirteenth or September twentieth, depending, no matter when you have the meeting, the next city commission meeting is October third. That's what I have.
Yeah, we have one on September nineteenth, but you're right, an action here on, you know, the thirteenth, I believe, would probably be a little bit later than we would issue, you know, capable of getting it onto the.
Wednesday before and then that's.
No, I was I was I was shooting for the October Thursday. We did it on the thirteenth.
I think that'd be.
But I I can understand just the regularly scheduled meeting as well, which is.
Can we have a backup date? Can we pick the thirteen and then have it if that you pull them tomorrow and you go, oh, it's not until the twentieth and it's just a regular scheduled meeting?
No, I I think then at that point we would be meeting on the thirteenth. And if if we were unable to, you know, complete action there, we would continue it again or or just schedule it at the next regular. There's a little bit of of risk picking a date without the benefit of the input of the other two members of the board. I recognize that.
Well, and are haven't we established from Jennifer that September thirteenth isn't necessarily any better for making the October third commission meeting than the regular scheduled twentieth would be? That's correct.
Yeah, and I it's still just being of time. I I will make whatever you come up with or.
Remember, I do believe you might be out of town.
And 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 on the on the twentieth as well, I was actually out of town. I just want to do. Do you want to clarify the need for for that October fifteenth date? I'm not sure if you want to do that or not.
Yeah, yeah, I do know. I guess I would offer that you can status for the city commission has to render a decision by October fifteenth. So to the extent you folks are able to schedule a a meeting in a time that allows the the commission sufficient time to deliberate, we certainly would appreciate that. And so, you know, it it occurs to me that the month of August is is a five Tuesday month, as we called in the business here. And so there are three more weeks from from yesterday until the next city commission meeting. And so I do recognize everybody's plans for the end of August, perhaps, and and this might not have been one, but to the extent you folks are willing to to schedule a a meeting here in the next, you know, three weeks, it it certainly would help our process. That said, like I mentioned earlier, if if that's not feasible and and we're not able to find a suitable special meeting date here during that the next regularly scheduled meeting on September twentieth, we we can certainly work with that process on the commission and it's suboptimal, but we'll adjust.
So are we? Okay, so where are we? So we're saying that we can have a special meeting date or we can leave it on the the twentieth, but Jen, you're gonna be out of town on that. I will, I will make this as my priority. So let's.
I I think just to be clear, I believe Jen was intending to attend a planning conference, so it was a professional related thing, but certainly continuing education can wait for a matter like this.
I wish, I wish we could.
Does it seem reasonable to to schedule something, a special meeting ahead of the twentieth and still have the twentieth as a fallback?
That's what I would prefer and I would prefer.
I guess.
When you have to, if we couldn't do that earlier meeting, what we have to do is we're we're postponing to date certain, right? So this we set that certain date. If we if we can't achieve that certain date, we have to make another.
It does it default to the annulation to the.
No, I I actually would offer that we would have two options. If we pick a special day, date certain, if we're able to convene on that day, we would do so. If we are not able to convene on that day, that meeting would be canceled and we would restart the noticing process for the September twentieth meeting. So to the extent you folks just felt suspenders here, to the extent you folks are thinking about, you know, that is an option. I would offer that would be better to give us, you know, at least fifteen days, you know, so September fifth, which is a city commission meeting. And the fourth is more or excuse me, Labor Day. And, you know, so we really are a at the end of this month. Between now and the end of the month would be optimal for a special meeting date.
So I'm gonna propose that we have a special meeting date on Wednesday, the twenty third, which is a week from today. Check your calendars.
I can't be there.
But can it be attended via Zoom? Yes. Can you check your calendars? I'm sorry, you're recommending most the day. The twenty third, one week from today. And I did check my email to make sure in case. Just anything, any anybody got a problem in in the room here? As we'll think, Jonathan, you said you couldn't, you you're not available via Zoom either.
No.
Okay. All right, all right. What about August thirtieth?
I'm also unavailable then. I could maybe make Zoom work on that date.
Can you make Zoom work on that date? All right, let's check August thirtieth. People. Hearing nothing else, we'll use August thirtieth as a special meeting date, and we will see if we can get the other two people to be available via via Zoom or in person. Defaulting to that does not work, defaulting to September twentieth, our regular scheduled meeting. Does that follow the rules?
If the motion was to continue, it's August thirtieth.
And the motion is the motion is to continue. Can I make this motion with the chair? Okay. Um, the motion I'm making the motion to continue this public hearing on August thirtieth at five thirty. And if that is unavailable, then it will be the regularly scheduled meeting on September twentieth. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
But then. Any discussion? All right, after the vote. Um, Tori. Jonathan.
Against.
Um, Taya, four. Jim.
Tentatively four.
Uh, Amy, four. And Shannon. And Stacy four. All right. And then just a quick question. Do you follow the same sequence of presentation and? Yes.
So I mean, I would offer you are not bound to the in the public hearing is continued. So everything that was introduced into the record today would appear then on the thirtieth or be carried forward to the thirtieth. So you could pick up the deliberations right.
So we would just be able to put whatever motion you want. Thank you for your clarification. Appreciate it. Just moving on very quickly, any old business? Any other board comments? A dream. Yeah. At whatever time it is. Thank you, everybody. That's how I wish to.